Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, July 12, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. We'll now have an invocation from Chaplain B. Evans from KNLB Christian Radio, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from the Lake Havasu Ballet, Nathan Cotum.
Good evening, everybody. Let's pray. Father, we just love you and we acknowledge you as our Lord tonight because your word said, "Blessed is the nation whose God is our Lord." You also told us, "Lord, you have a plan for our lives, to prosper us, not to harm us, to give a hope in the future." And we're grateful and we trust you with that, Lord. But tonight, Father, it's our council that we bring before the throne of grace. We ask a special blessing on each one of them. We know they love the city of Lake Havasu and they love the people here. So we just ask tonight, Father, because we know they've already asked for wisdom and you've given it to them. So we ask that there be yes and there be no, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, Nathan. Welcome from the Lake Havasu Ballet. If you want to share a little bit about the program with us, we'd appreciate it.
It would be my pleasure. Thank you so much for the invitation to be here, Mayor Sheehy and distinguished council members. As Mayor said, my name is Nathan Cotum. I am the new artistic and executive director of Lake Havasu Ballet, just for about a month now. I'm a part-time resident of Lake Havasu. I also live in San Francisco, California. So it's on one of my trips here that I get this pleasure of being part of the city council meeting. And came here tonight from our beautiful studios on Jamaica Boulevard, right behind the beautiful dome, Stonebridge Christian Fellowship. There's a little, it's actually very big, education center tucked back in there with some gorgeously apportioned ballet studios. I want to let you know some special opportunities that are coming up with Lake Havasu Ballet. This Thursday evening at 6:00, we're going to have an open house at our studios at 2700 Jamaica Boulevard South. Just look for the, you know, the beautiful golf balls that have been there since 1972. Holy cow. Come back into the parking lot and at 6:00, we're going to have about an hour-long opportunity to come into the studios, meet some of the dancers, meet me a little bit more, see what we do over there. You'll even get a chance to see a very short performance that's going to, that we're preparing for now as part of a week-long summer intensive that we have going on. The other exciting thing that we're going to be doing this year is a Nutcracker performance right here in Lake Havasu. We're going to perform, we're going to develop a special version of the Nutcracker just for Lake Havasu City. And just, that's something that we're in the preparations for now and I hope you all come out to see it this December. But with that said, please come to our open house on Thursday evening at 6:00. I'll post some flyers and a poster out there for you to grab and come to be part of that. If you have any questions, there are some phone numbers on there and an email address. It'll be my pleasure to host you Thursday at the open house. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. Welcome to Lake Havasu. All right. The next item on our agenda is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell?
Here.
David Lane?
Here.
Michelle Lynn?
Here.
Cameron Moses?
Here.
Jenny Koch?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jim Dolan?
Here.
Mayor Cal Sheehy?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five on the agenda is the call to the public. This is an opportunity where citizens have to address the city council matters within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. Your comments would be limited to three minutes. There is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have three minutes. Yellow means that you have one minute remaining and red means that your three minutes is up. If you are here for one of our public hearing items, we encourage you to wait until that time so we can have a two-way conversation. Otherwise, during the call to the public, we cannot have a two-way conversation. We can listen intently to whatever the comments may be. But again, you'll be addressing directly to the council. And during the call to the public, individual members of the council may respond to criticism if it's been addressed to a member of the council. You don't have to sign up for a call to the public, but we did have a few residents do so. So we'll start with those in order that they signed up and then we'll open it up to anyone else that would like to address the city council. The first speaker would be Morgan Braden.
Thank you, council. I find it important right now and necessary for me to make a statement. I've been kind of wrapped up into stuff that I really had no control over and getting blamed for some stuff I had no control of. And I just want to read this statement. This statement that I'm reading you right now was given to the paper and it was also published publicly on Havasu Orchids and Onions and my own personal web, my own personal Facebook page for my city council run. It says this, "Havasu City, I feel it necessary to set my record straight with my involvement with the administration of Havasu Orchids and Onions. I was contacted by Robert via text over a month ago about my run for city council. He stated that he thinks I am the best candidate and realized I was a moderator on that site and he wants to replace the current members running for reelection. I have not met him nor have I told him what to do or post anything. All his actions have been his own. I have no control over his postings. He started out just pushing people to register to vote and I believe he has done a good job on that. Then just over a few weeks ago, he started posting my information on some of his posts. I did not ask for it. I just got the impression he was a great fan. I believe that he was, I believe that he has increased the voter base in this city and can take many votes away from the incumbents. I have not agreed with, I have not agreed with all of the tactics and advised him to keep my name off some of them. I did not advise him to take it off the register to vote stuff. It's just the super negative stuff that he was doing. He has worked independently for me and did a great service by trying to get voters to the polls, which is going to be the one thing I believe that he did successfully do. But again, I had no control over what he said. I have no control over what he did. Thank you. God bless."
Thank you. The next speaker is Michael Petroski? Sorry, Michael. Petroski. Still didn't get it right.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to bring your attention to something I was completely unaware of and I would bet that probably 80% of the audience is unaware of. There's a municipal code in this section that apparently addresses the section of downtown on McCulloch, down in the area of the Bar area and BJ's Cantina. Here's a section in the municipal code, it's 10.12.140, called Parking Out of Space. Any vehicle parked on a street which has parking spaces indicated by lines or markings shall park completely within these lines or spaces. The problem is, I interpret that as to park inside, don't take up two stalls, and most people I think would. However, the city has left from Querrio Drive up to Tacoma, six particular areas of curb space that is not painted red. They've done a very good job of painting red curbs from Querrio down to Smoke Tree. There is essentially nowhere to park other than in a marked parking space. But what's going on up in front of BJ's Cantina area at Pima Wash, on each side of the wash, there is open curb space of approximately 20 to 25 feet on each side of the wash that is just plain unmarked curb. Apparently, over Memorial Weekend, when I became a victim of a parking site, because I parked at 11:30 at night at what appeared to be a normal curb parking spot, I received a citation for this. I tried to fight it in court. Unfortunately, the judge in traffic court saw it differently than I did. I wanted to bring you to the attention also that that there is a there is another section that does say, and I consider this a restricted parking area because it's different than the state vehicle code. It's more restrictive than any other code and nobody knows about it. And that's my issue with it. Nobody knows about it. In the vehicle code, I mean, in the municipal code also in Havasu, 10.12.080, says, "No parking restrictions shall become effective until such signs have been erected or the curbs have been painted." These areas are not painted, nor are there any signs in that entire area addressing this particular ordinance. And being a tourist town, you have to admit that on big weekends, we have lots of people from out of state. I've lived here, I've had a home here for eight years. I'm here permanently now since last year. And I had no idea of this ordinance. I couldn't convince the judge in court about it and I got fined $90. But I would like to bring it to the attention of the council that I feel Traffic Engineering needs to do a better job, at least go out there. Where I parked, they painted 30 feet of red curb directly in front of where I was at because there's a fire hydrant. I did not park in the fire zone. And I would like to see the council or the Traffic Engineering Department or somebody do something to stop the police department for continually writing tickets there on weekends, which they have been doing lately.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Mr. Knutson, could you have staff take a look at those code sections and see how we can address that to make sure it doesn't become an issue?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right. The next citizen that has signed up to speak is Ms. Kelly Lutz. Oh, Mr. Excuse me.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Managers and City Council Members. We, the people, have been witness to multiple zoning changes altering the well-thought-out plans of the city, changing income-generating retail areas and even commercial areas to high-density residential developments under the guise of appeasing a plea for lower costs, affordable housing, when actually the only benefit is the amount of profit to the developer. Even most of the city council members express concern over the affordability of these sure-to-be income-investment units, but you went ahead and approved the zoning changes and the high-density project. How does this benefit the people of Lake Havasu? The next buzzword topic we're talking about is water. Contemplating landscape codes for our predominantly rock landscape city. This, of course, is right after you approved a few hundred of these high-density home tracts that will need obviously more water allocated to them. Save a gallon? Allocate a few thousand gallons? Speaking of spending money, please explain the Aquatic Center $3 million HVAC bid. From a former business owner and homeowner's point of view, how the heck do you approve $3 million HVAC replacement when it only costs $7 million for the entire courthouse? Or is it $10 million? And by the way, why do we need a new courthouse in this inflated time of building anyway? Are we not leasing space at a very reasonable rate? The aquatic HVAC bid sounds like a helpless woman getting overcharged by an unscrupulous mechanic. Are you accepting the opinion of the bidder that stands to profit $3 million in the replacement instead of repairing the existing units? The courthouse and the aquatic center are some of the concerns we citizens have regarding the open checkbook mentality of the city council. Where is the fiscal responsibility we should expect? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And if you stay through the meeting to item 8.8, we can have a discussion about the HVAC system. All right. That concludes the citizens that have signed up for call to the public. Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public? Please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good morning. I'm Bonnie Toy. Oops. Forgot to look behind me. By the way, everybody's beautiful today and I really appreciate every one of you. I wanted to ask one question, which was somebody asked me, which I thought was really odd. What happened to the gym equipment from Planet, not Planet, Havasu Fitness? What? That's what I was asked. And then I have something I really wanted to share, which I just found out today. It's really funny. I know that I have said this many times and I decided I'm going to keep saying it many times until it happens. I would like to encourage the city to please lower the rates of the aquatic center during the summer vacation months for the kids of Lake Havasu, especially for families who can't afford $5 a pop, especially if they have more than one child, to send them to the aquatic center for the day. I believe that lowering the cost to the aquatic center is a wise choice because it gives Lake Havasu something for the kids to do that they would be able to afford to do if you make it where it's a much reasonable price for them to go every single day if they want versus one day out of the whole summer. Second, odd story, you know, have we lived to California or Arizona? I was told today by someone else that our aquatic center price is more expensive than the price of the pool in Needles. Hello? Needles is California. And it costs less to go swimming in the pool in California than it does in Arizona. That's kind of just really sad. And our kids are not out there getting good quality activity that will help them in the future. So I will continue to share my thoughts on that. Thank you and have a good day.
Thank you. Good evening.
I know you're not happy to see me. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Kelly Meister. All of you know me. Two things I've learned while in the Marine Corps was teamwork and integrity. As a city council, your job is to work for the people of Lake Havasu. During your job for the people requires teamwork integrity. There have been times, and will be times, that all of you don't agree with each other and that's fine because not everybody agrees with each other. People are like a dozen of donuts. You know, we're all different. But we're all stuck in a box together. And if we were all glazed donuts, we'd all suck because it, you know, it'd be boring. So my point is, we need to work together because we're stuck together. Nobody should be thrown under the bus or allow anybody else to be thrown under the bus. Or the past week, Havasu Orchids and Onions have called out Councilmember Lynn, Councilmember Koch and Vice Mayor Dolan and have thrown them under the bus and nobody has seemed to defend them. Well, I'm here to defend them. Councilmember Lynn, Councilmember Koch and Vice Mayor Dolan have been smeared by this Robert Peterson and the Orchids and Onions. And they've also been threatened and by his political agenda. Some people say it's not their political agenda that he's carrying on, but I'll call bullshit on that. Playing dirty and trying to run people off to get elected to the city council, this tactic is wrong. This is where teamwork and integrity from all the city council, the mayor and the staff come into play. Because at any given time, any of you could be the target. And everybody has skeletons in their closet. Unfortunately, all of us in this audience, everybody. There are crazy people who think that scaring council members, mayors and other local officials is a way to get their agenda, get themselves or get their agenda put out there. When I was in the Marine Corps in Okinawa, Japan from 18, 1989 to 1990, I witnessed a coup d'etat in the Philippines. I've never in my entire life thought I'd be witnessing a coup d'etat in America. We are a small town like a family and we, as a people, have to work together as a team in order to keep the integrity of Lake Havasu together. Allowing someone on a Facebook site who don't have the guts to come here and publicly complain to the city council is dirty and should be frowned upon. I know I'm done, but everybody else in here gets three minutes times 10. Even though I may not always agree with Councilmember Lynn, Councilmember Koch or Vice Mayor Dolan or any of you, I support you in your run for election, reelection. And tonight, I stand here and I said, "This needs to stop. This is integrity." And I want to know who stands with me.
Thank you, Kelly. Would anyone else like, yes, Christine, just state your name for the record, please?
Yes, Christine Simmons from Pod, Protect Our Desert. Hello, everyone. And I do support each and every one of you and I love being at all events and I see you there. You know, you're everywhere. It's amazing. Tonight, I want to remind people about Kindness Matters. Good timing, I think. I have to tell you, I went to Romano's the other night for dinner and there was a Kindness Matters card when I walked in. And I said, "Where did you get that?" And she says, "Oh, one of our patrons gave it to us." But they were showing it off and I love that. And other things that I love about Havasu is I chose this city to retire. I discovered the city in 1992. We were boaters, didn't really know the city, didn't really get involved in the city. But when I retired in 2009, I lived here full-time and my first experience was the Citizens Police Academy, indoctrination to what's really happening in this city and how safe we are. So I'm hoping they will revive that because it was a wonderful experience. Over the years, I've met some great entrepreneurs. Our city is thriving for entrepreneurs and my son wanted American flag and he couldn't find one at Walmart back in those days. But we discovered George at Arizona Flags and he shared all our responsibilities about the flag and he had American-made flags and he's on a coma. Another place is Home Out West. Lovely people, share the Kindness Matters and they have unique items. So stop in. Another place I love is Body Essentials. If you need a little TLC, go there. See Julie or Liz. There's so many organizations and so many volunteers in the city. You don't find that everywhere, but you find it here. I mean, it's unbelievable. When people come here, they go, "Kyle, the events, all the things to do." Yeah, that's Havasu. I met some Super Rangers working with me, hand in hand and cleaning up the desert. And I took a class, a gun class with Ellie at Sam Shooter's and I learned a lot about guns and gun safety. One of my favorite magazines is free here in town. Comes out, I think, quarterly. Mayor, you're in this one. But it highlights businesses and organizations and pick it up. It's free. So hey, in days of inflation, anything that's free is a good thing. Kindness, I found, is not affected by inflation. It doesn't cost any money. Just smile, be kind, be considerate and it comes back to you. There's this wonderful orator that said, "It's nice to be important, but it's more important to be nice." And that was Kermit the Frog.
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
If anyone else would like to speak, just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Good evening, council member, mayor, manager. August the 2nd is right around the corner. Time to vote. So make sure you have it on your agenda and we have a lot of important people to take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Good evening, City Council Mayor. My name is Frankie Lyons. Good evening, audience. What I'm concerned about right here, right now, is the water conservation. I know you guys talked about it during bubblers and stuff with the trees, but what are we actually doing to contact the people to tell them to lessen the water usage? I see people using the hose washing down their driveways, washing down their cars, pools running down the streets during the day, which is eroding our streets and damaging cars because of whatever they throw up against the cars. The people are installing grass, believe it or not, and it's being overlooked. It's being sold at Home Depot and also at Lowe's. What is the city doing to encourage water conservation? This is not a question about the wells because you guys know that's a whole different story regarding the conservation of water. We currently have no turf policy. The fake turf is good because it doesn't take anything. Low plants, no outdoor fountains, which I still see some fountains running around town that should be shut off. And thank you for shutting the one off down at Wheeler Park because that was a lot of water running through there. We have districts R3 and higher, but there's nothing for the R1 and 2. They are free to do what they want and conservation is totally voluntary. Most cities are having discussions now, but what are we doing about it? Because I don't see anything coming to my house to remind the community. I'm requesting that the city council on planning zoning revisit this issue with the current water shortage issues in mind. I would also like to see water conservation messages conveyed to the public through media and as opposed to having to go to the city website. Our seniors hate computers because sometimes they're difficult for them to use. Lake Havasu Water Conservation Volunteer Group, run by Water Conservation Officer, I'd like to see that in the website again. This is a question I can ask Jim Dolan, or he could answer at some point. He's on the Airport Advisory Committee. Why would we recommend a helicopter company to do business out on the island when we have a perfectly good airport? There's businesses out there and if they start their helicopter flights out there, people will start using those facilities out there instead of putting something on the island, which is pretty dense in population. Let's see. We settled about getting a permit and I think, again, it should be out at the airport. Originally set to rezone, rezoning, it's crazy on rezoning. You're taking away the commercial portion of our city and it's important that we take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council during call to the public? All right. Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public. Move on to item six on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor?
Yeah. Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Please.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Koch and a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any further discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item seven is correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements and the city manager report. Item 7.1 is to announce the vacancies on Lake Havasu City boards, committees and commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are just a few vacancies left on Lake Havasu Board Committees and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies with board of adjustment, three alternate members. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall and they are also available on the city's website at www.lhcaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is the city manager's report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Merry Tuesday to you. I'd like to start the manager's report with some sad thoughts here. As we send off Sandy McCormick with a happy retirement, we say goodbye to our longtime employee, Sandy McCormick with Administrative Services. Sandy gave the city 25 years of her accounting talent and we wish her the best of luck in her retirement. Sandy was originally hired as a temp in September of 1997 and she filled in as an accountant clerk too and later became a full-time, full-time that year in December. Since then, she held the titles of accountant, a division manager, senior budget analyst, and lastly, as a senior accountant. Congratulations to you, Sandy, and thank you for 25 years of your dedication and service to Lake Havasu City. What she's done for Havasu will reap the rewards for many, many years. Councilmember Lane and Vice Mayor Dolan, you asked me to take a look at political signs and report back to the council. So I've got two slides here to kind of talk about where we're at with the existing city code, some of the state statutes that kind of guide the practices. I think it's probably everyone's opinion that it's a little nuts out there. And there are signs everywhere. There's signs that are legally placed per the code and per state statutes, but I want to hit on a few things here so we have an idea. This is the language in the city This is the language in the city code on political signage. So this is everything in the code regards to political signage. Obviously, there is some additional language that's in state statute and other areas. You'll see there keenly is that you're seeing like 71 days prior to an election is the first day the signs can be placed. All signs must be removed within 15 days, either at the primary, if that's settled there, or at the general election. Signs shall not be placed on public property, on utility poles or similar devices, or in locations that are hazardous to public safety, that would clearly obstruct clear vision in the area, including our intersections. We have some language in there that talks about residential areas, the sign should not exceed 16 square feet. So that would be like a four-foot-by-four-foot sign, and that is also in our city code. And then kind of unique to Havasu, we have a tourism district. The commercial tourism, commercial resort, and hotel sign free zone, that was designated by the city several years ago. And I'll show a copy of that map, and in these areas, no political signs are allowed in the right of way. They can obviously be placed on private property with the property owner's permission, but we shouldn't see any political signs in the right of way in this area. In addition, all signs must include the name, which is usually on the sign itself, but also contact information, including a telephone number or website address of the candidate or the campaign committee contact person. So if a sign is illegally placed, that there is a point of contact that can be made. It's the responsibility of the individual places the sign to comply with all city and state regulations and laws, ongoing maintenance, and finally, the removal of the campaign signs. So sometimes we see the signs that get blown over, get lopsided in another way. That is the candidate's responsibility or that does need to make sure that those signs are maintained properly. City Council and Mayor and City Council, as you're well aware, we have a reactive code enforcement approach. And so while we have many illegal signs throughout, political signs throughout the community, we rely on our citizens to contact us if they see a violation. That's the approach right now. We have received one complaint from the public. That complaint was handled after contacting the individual that put up the political sign and was easily solved. I think it was a sign that was placed in an intersection that was blocking some, blocking view. You know, for code enforcement, we ask the public if they see a violation, whether it's a political sign or any other violation of the city code, contact code enforcement at City Hall, and you can do that through email, through phone, our website. A really convenient way of contacting the city on all issues, including code enforcement for political signs, is to download that Havasu Now, all one word, download that mobile app. You can take a picture, you can, we can provide the location, and that really helps out city staff as we respond and all that. So this is kind of a synopsis of where we're at in terms of political signs. We have a reactive code enforcement, and we have a lot of illegally placed campaign signs out there right now. And I've heard lots of comments that it's worse than it's ever been, kind of situation. There's a lot of elections that are taking place in the primary, you know, across the county, the state, and we're seeing the impacts of all that as well. I think Councilmember Lane, you asked the city staff to take a close look at it, as well as Vice Mayor Dolan, and outside of the election process. So we can come back here after this has cooled down a little bit and identify where we want to see maybe some code changes to kind of clarify this, how we want to approach it. And most importantly, from the city's perspective, is that we do it in a fair, transparent, and consistent manner. There's no favorites. It's all about where the signs are placed. It has nothing to do with the content of the sign or who's running or any of those types of things, too. So we need to establish those rules far in advance. And if we want to be more proactive from a city code enforcement perspective, we need to figure out that plan as well, too. So we can bring some of that back. The state statutes, and 99 times of 100, you're going to hear myself, you're going to hear our city attorney, you're going to hear others that say that if we're sourcing a state statute, that we source it, and we don't repeat that language, because that state statute, if that changes, then we have conflict with our code and with statute. But I think I'll be recommending that we maybe copy some of that language into our city code in this instance, just so that somebody that's running for elected office in Havasu or throughout the county can pull out our code and be assured of what the rules and regulations are. So we can have some of those conversations when we get to that point. Hopefully, that kind of satisfies the request coming from Vice Mayor Dolan. And Councilmember Lane? Yeah, thank you. And then lastly, some updates since we last met. Mayor Shi, you attended a celebration for a six-year-old, Cooper Sepulveda, committing his achievement, six years old, and his brave journey on beating cancer. Cooper was diagnosed with Ewing sarcoma one year ago, and today is cancer-free. Congratulations to Cooper and his family. Mayor, you attended the Veterans Treatment Court just last Friday. It was the 40th graduation. You were joined by Vice Mayor Jim Dolan, Councilmembers Cameron Moses, Nancy Campbell, and Councilmember David Lane. I think our magistrate was there as well. You can see in the bottom right corner, a picture, and our bottom left corner, all the support for the graduates and for the program. 223 veterans have successfully completed the program since its inception, and our current recidivism rate is 9.4%. That means that people that are entering that program do not return to the courts. And while you're looking at a national average, somewhere in the vicinity of 75%, and we're at less than 10%. On Saturday, Mayor, you and Councilmember David Lane attended the 7th Annual Mark S. Nixon Veterans Treatment Court Family Day event in honor of our justice-involved veterans, the graduates, the mentors, their families, and all that support that program. And just today, you presented certificates of appreciation to two very special residents in Lake Havasu City, Joy Simon and Benita Milliman. They are longtime volunteers of the city, and to thank them for their dedication and service to this community as they've spent the last 12 years picking up trash on Main Street. In the picture there, you'll see Public Works Director Greg Frostley, Mayor Shihi, and Regan Ross of Main Street gather to greet Joy and Benita in the lobby and personally thank them for all their efforts. If you've driven down McCullough in the downtown early in the morning, you've seen both of these residents hard at work in picking up trash in our downtown areas. So Joy and Benita asked our mayor to pass on their thanks to our police department, our dispatchers, and those that they had on speed out with the city. And they wanted to present a special thanks to Officers Larry Allen, David Summers, and Aaron Stanley for their kindness and assistance over their years. So thank you, Joy, and thank you, Benita, for all you did for Havasu the last several years and to come. Mayor and Council, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. We'll move on to item eight, which is our public hearings. We'll start with item 8.1, a Class B Bingo license application for Meals on Wheels. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Donald Browning has applied for a Class B Bingo license for Meals on Wheels to be used at 5601 Highway 95, Unit F, which is win-win bingo. The bingo games will be held five days a week, Wednesday through Sunday, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The application was reviewed internally, and no objections were received, and all fees were paid. Bingo licenses are regulated by the Arizona Department of Revenue Bingo Section. A Class B license allows qualified organizations to generate funds for their sponsoring charitable organization. In accordance with state statute, the local governing body must set hearing and recommend approval or disapproval of this application within 45 days of filing. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant was also invited to attend tonight to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Are there any questions from members of the council from Ms. Williams or the applicant?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for the applicant.
Yeah, Councilmember Lane, Mr. Brown, if you could just make your way up to the podium.
Mayor, Council, my name is Don Browning, and I'm happy to answer any questions I can for the Meals on Wheels program.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Thank you, Mayor. And my question is, are you a Havasu-based nonprofit Meals on Wheels? And is the money that you're going to raise through this organization going to stay here in Lake Havasu City?
Well, as we all know, the Meals on Wheels program is a national initiative, but this specific use of this specific money will stay within the city limits.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions of the applicant? All right, thank you, Mr. Browning. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Revenue approve a Class B Bingo license for Meals on Wheels Incorporated at 5601 Highway 95, the shops at Lake Havasu City.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.2 is Adopt Resolution Number 22-3596, levying 0.6718 cents upon the assessed valuation of the property within Lake Havasu City, subject to taxation, upon each $100 valuation, sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be required in the annual budget less the amount estimated to be received from fines, licenses, and other sources of revenue, which is an additional levy amount of $248,432, excluding new construction due to the increased assessed valuation, providing for a general fund and a fund for the general municipal expenses for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023. Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I want to start by saying thank you to all of the directors and their staff, all the city staff who are involved in the budget process. Everybody did a lot of hard work, and we appreciate all of the assistance. And I especially want to thank Angie, Angie Bakken, who is the Budget Manager, for her assistance and leadership throughout this process. To start off this evening, we have a property tax video that we would like to show, just to kick off this tonight's item.
Let's talk property taxes. Here are some common questions about property taxes. Where does my property tax bill come from? The Mojave County Treasurer sends out property tax bills for local jurisdictions. Local jurisdictions include your county, city school districts, special taxing districts, and the state, not just Mojave County. Where does the money go? Lake Havasu City only receives 7% of your property tax bill. For Lake Havasu City residents, the majority of your property taxes go directly to education. Other government agencies that receive a portion of your property tax dollars include the school district, the community college district, Mojave County. The school district taxes are the largest portion of the property taxes from other jurisdictions, followed by the community college district. Your property tax bill lists each agency's tax rate and the exact amount that each agency receives. How is my property tax bill calculated? The amount of your property tax bill is based on your property's assessed value, the exemptions it qualifies for, its use, and your local property tax rate. Property assessments are conducted every year, every other year, or when a property is transferred. Mojave County Assessor assesses the value of properties across the county. The local governing body approves a tax rate each year during the budget adoption. Lake Havasu City Council has kept the tax rate the same for several years. For more information on reading and understanding your tax bill, please visit the Mojave County Treasurer's Office website.
Okay, so with that, we will start the process of the adoption of the tax levies. The taxes have been discussed throughout the budget process through several meetings. The first item up is the general fund property tax levy. For this item, this shows the amount of the assessed value. The assessor, then, you multiply that by 10%, and then you apply the rate to that, and that's how you get the revenue number. We are proposing to leave the property tax rate the same, or flat, at 0.6718 per $100 of valuation. And the amount of revenue that we receive does increase over the amount of revenue we've received in fiscal year '22 due to the increase in assessed value. The additional revenue that we would collect as a result of the increase in the assessed value is approximately $248,000. The remainder of the increase in the revenues is due to new construction and levying the tax upon that. With that, I will open up for discussion or any questions that the council might have or the public.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Olson. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council? Councilmember Campbell?
A question.
Yes.
If we were to reduce this rate down to 0.65%, I did some math, and it looks like that would only be a slight change, kind of meeting in the middle with the citizens. I've had a lot of complaints, obviously, that they think the city is making plenty of revenues, and during a recession, we should probably consider helping them out a little bit. I know other municipalities are doing the same. And I was wondering, what does that look like tonight if I was to actually make a motion to adjust this down a little?
The amount of the revenue that would be lost as a result of that, we would need to go to the general fund portion of the budget and reduce the budget by that amount.
Okay, and realistically, if we just reduce it down, let's say to 0.65, we're talking about $100,000, give or take, in reduction in general revenues. And I have a recommendation that I'd really like to see that done. And if anybody else has any questions or concerns about this, I would love to hear your comments.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Campbell. Are there any other questions or comments? Councilmember Lane?
I would like to, I know I don't want you to sit up here and have to do math right now, but could you, like, show us what that would look like, for example, the difference on a house right now from what we talked about before at the last meeting? We talked about the price of the house is at 100, 200, 300, and what that looked like. If we were to change that rate, what does that look like? Is that going to be too much math for you to try to figure out?
Yeah, I can't do that in my head, but if Councilmember Campbell is correct, then that $100,000 would probably be a reduction in revenues of about, I would say, probably half, little over, little less than half of the $248,000. So probably $124,000 reduction in the budget would be needed.
And I do want to let you know as well that we've had, that does not include the new construction money that we are getting. That's why you see a levy of an increase of $388,000. So what I'm basically saying is the new construction should help offset any increases and give the residents of Lake Havasu City a little reduction here. I also want to know, let everybody know that there is a, Kevin McCarthy, and I cannot remember the exact proposition that went into place, but for any of you out there that don't realize this, that they did put a cap about 10 years ago on your limited value of your home to cap at 5% a year. So I've had a lot of constituents come to me and say, my house price went up $600,000. I bought it for 300. I can't afford $67 times 3, you know, 300. And that's not necessarily the case. So I do want to let everybody know that there is a cap. Any of you that bought years ago, it could only go up 5% a year. But what we do know is the citizens of Lake Havasu City are suffering. We do know that our revenues are higher. We do know that we gave all of our staff colas. And I really personally think giving a reduction almost equal to the tax levy of the increases that we receive from new construction is a positive thing for our community.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
I think it's definitely a great discussion. We do have a budget process that starts at the beginning of the year. Staff goes through this. If this is something we want to look at for the next budget, I think we should give staff time to crunch those numbers instead of us kind of just guessing off the top of our head of what it would be. Because like I said, then we're going to have to go back to our budget, and where are we going to cut the maybe 100 or 200,000? We don't know the right amount. Hypothetically, on a 500, if it's a $500,000 house, the rates, based on this increase in revenue from staying the same, it's $12 more a year that somebody would pay for a half a million-dollar house. If we're talking about cutting off, yeah, it is, so it's $2.85 for every $100,000. On, on the city tax, this is not the, the county, this is, you need to talk to county. This is for the city side of it. This is our rate. So on a $500,000 house, your rate will go up $2.85 times five. So what is that, 12, 13? So if we're gonna cut it at that percent, that's, we, we assume that's 100,000 from what we're guessing, that's a third. We're gonna save the taxpayers $4 by doing this right now. We are saving the taxpayers, what is it, $149, I believe, by getting rid of the ADD. So I definitely don't mind this discussion. I think we should have it, but I think we should have the exact numbers. I think it's just irresponsible to just pull the trigger right now and not know the exact numbers because we're gonna have to go back and what are we gonna cut? So like I said, the budget process starts in January, February. We have tons of meetings. I think at last minutes, just changing something is, is, I don't think we should do that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Dolan. Ms. Olson, if, if the council was to decide to do that, would we have to go back through and do a new truth in taxation hearing? Will we be out of compliance with state statute based on the statute-specific calendar dates that have to be met?
I don't believe we would have to start that process over.
Okay.
Yeah, staff could, would have to come back with the proposed reductions in the, in the budget so that you would know the actual impact.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Lynn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. First off, I want to start off by making a public apology to Ms. Olson. Because of all the political rhetoric that's been going on on Facebook, you guys all heard about some of this earlier this evening. She was subject to part of that because she tried to put some actual numbers out for people to be able to read. And she was attacked personally, and that's unacceptable. If people want to attack us as elected officials, hey, I'm all for it. I got big shoulders. But don't do it to our staff. Do it to us. So I just think that you're owed an apology, and I'm giving it to you.
Thank you.
So, and now let's talk about the taxes. So we're talking 67 cents for every $100 on your taxes, on your property taxes. That's how much actually comes to the city. So your property tax bill, as you all saw earlier, your property tax bill is higher than that because the county takes money, the state takes money, there's a bunch of different districts. But what we do here in the city, we collect 67 cents for every $100 of valuation. And we don't value your house. We don't assess properties. That's up to the county. We keep our tax rate the same. The monies that we collect from this, they go into our general fund. And our general fund, that is what supports our law enforcement, our first responders, our fire department, our parks. We heard a citizen say earlier that she would like to see us lower rates at the aquatic center. That's part of Parks and Recreation. This would reduce that budget. Mr. City Manager, you could probably answer this question. What's the, do you know what the budget is for the police department and the fire department?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Lane, round numbers, our police department costs the city $20 million per year, just a little over $20 million. And our fire department total budget to provide fire service to the community is about $19 million. So almost $40 million combined between the two departments.
And then our property taxes that we collect, approximately, how much do we collect in property taxes across the city? Just the property taxes that come to the city of Lake Havasu?
Uh, the total tax levy would be six, little, less than $6 million.
Okay, a little less than $6 million that we would have to take out of the budget of our law enforcement, take out of the budget of our, our fire department, take out of the budget of our Parks and Recs if we were to lower our tax rate and not have this, this property tax. This property tax is important to this city, and this is the things that it pays for. As Vice Mayor Dolan said, it comes out to roughly $12 a year more in taxes. Yeah, nobody wants to pay $12 in taxes. Nobody wants to pay taxes at all. But we're also doing away with the ADD, as Vice Mayor Dolan said. For me, myself, that's $145 a year that I'll no longer be paying on my property taxes. But I'll be paying $14 a year more on my property taxes based on this. So that's a net gain to me of $130 a year that we're lowering your taxes in the city of Lake Havasu. This stuff we heard on social media earlier, that it's $1,000 for every man, woman, and child because we're doubling the taxes. It's not true. I believe that keeping the tax rate at 67 cents for every $100, that's seven pennies out of every dollar to help fund our police department, our fire department, and our parks department. So, yeah, I don't, I don't think we should be lowering it. I think we should keep it exactly the same as we've always done. We've never raised the taxes here in the city. We don't need to raise the taxes. We just need to keep our levies the same. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Lane.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I, I think what, what I've been hearing from the citizens is, I, I think they're wanting some empathy from us, and, and I understand that because the house, the value of the houses went up. And so that was affected, this was affects the rate. So when we have a house that was $100,000 and now it's valued at $400,000, I don't think our residents are worried about that $12. It's the extra tax that adds on that, if I'm correct. Is this what we're, I, I really like to hear from the public if that's what this is about. Because I'm confused too, and that's why at the last meeting, I tried to spell it out with it, $8, $11, $15, but it's more than that. I believe what, what the residents are trying to tell us, it's that plus what they're getting charged because their value of their house went up. Am I putting this correctly? And I just think, I, I want that our citizens know we're empathetic on what that looks like, and we understand that your, your tax bill is gonna be higher, but it's not because of what the city's imposing. It's because our value, uh, the inflation of your houses went up. So I mean, I, I understand where Councilmember Campbell's coming. It's $100,000. Can we find that somewhere else in the budget? We probably can. And that way, we're, we're giving a little bit back to the citizens. We're being empathetic to them, and we're not losing that much as a city. So I, I could support dropping it to that.
And I just want to say my concerns too, a lot of us probably can afford that. But all the new buyers that are out there right now that are looking at having to pay their property taxes, a higher interest rate, trying to buy a home that's 600,000 or 500,000, and we just keep assuming, oh, they can handle it, they can afford it. So to this little tiny amount here is not gonna hurt our city at all, but it can make the difference of somebody being able to purchase a home or not. And I know that sounds crazy, but in today's world, it's tough out there. And I'm just trying to fight for something little. I wanted to meet in the middle too. I didn't want to go all the way back to the 64.37% is what it basically showed last year, and now it's at 67.18, and that's based on evaluations. Trust me, I spent I don't know how many hours in texting, emailing poor Jill, and I finally figured it out. I think I got it. Don't you agree? But anyways, that's what I'm trying to say. So again, most of you that own a home here in Lake Havasu, your assessed value was blocked, capped at 5% a year. You're doing just fine, but there's a lot of new ones out there that are trying to get in, and this could just make the difference of not being able to do that.
All right, so let me just clarify a couple of those numbers real quick, just so everyone understands. Where, we've thrown around a few different numbers. So the, the rate is staying the same is what the proposal is and the budget that we adopted. The rate would be 67 cents per $100 of rate. If we were to not take in to account the increase in valuation that the county assessor did to properties, then the rate would have been $64.33 per $100. So that's where the difference of $2.85 per $100,000. So I know we all said it a little differently, but that's the math on how you can do it and put it together. So with that being said, several councilmembers mentioned they'd like to hear from the public, so let's do that. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone would like to address the city council on this matter, please make your way to the podium and state your name for the record.
Kelly Meister again. So here's my thought. Since the, um, the mayor, or the mayor, I'm sorry, mayor, excuse me. Since the governor just gave us control of the vacation rentals again. And I know all of you out here have probably had this before. Every time on busy weekends, and over the summer, every time you call for a cop, an ambulance, fire department, we don't get our services because they're all down at the lake taking care of the tourists. So why don't we add a tax, lower ours to six point, to the point six-five, and then add a, a tax to the hotels and vacation rentals for emergency services, like they do in all these other big towns, like Vegas, Miami, and all these other big vacation towns? Why can't we do that? I mean, that, that would take it off of our shoulders and put it on the people who are always using our services. You know, that, that would be a good idea instead of taxing us to death. I mean, I'm a disabled veteran and live on a budget. I have a rental on my property, and I rent, it's two bed and two bath. I rent it out for 950 a month. When these people move out, I'm gonna raise the rent because of the taxes. That's all I can do. Why should I have to keep doing this to my renters when there's people in this town who can't even afford to rent? This is ridiculous. Why can't we start taxing the people who are actually using our services all the time when we can't? That's my question.
Yeah, no, thank you for that question. So we can have that discussion during the budget process. We're, we're right now at the, the very end of a very, very long process and wanting to kind of shake it all up and change what was done through public hearings. So I, I hear what you're saying, Ms. Meister, and I think that that's a good conversation to have. But just to clarify, the governor, the legislature and the governor did give the ability for us to regulate short-term rentals, but it doesn't go into effect for 90 days from the close of the session. So that's not until October, and we will have future discussions about what that looks like and what that new law allows. That's about all I can talk about there because it's not actually, that's not the agenda that we're talking about, but, but we will have that conversation. So, but your, your point is well taken, and we appreciate your comments, and we'll, we'll incorporate those into the conversations.
So can we go ahead and think about lowering this now and then adding those taxes after, in 90 days or whatever, however we can do this?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a little more complicated than that. I mean, it's, it's a big Tetris puzzle of multiple funds. So this is just specific to the general fund. As Councilmember Lane had mentioned, that is primarily police, fire, and parks. There's other funds that are out there, so when there's comments about the, that the city is getting additional revenues, that, that is true, but it might not be going directly into the general fund. But the city, just like our citizens are experiencing, are also experiencing the cost of inflation for the products and the goods and services that we need to purchase in order to deliver the services that we do to our citizens. So it's, it's, it's multifaceted. It's, it's fairly complex. It seems very, very simple when, when we talk about just this really small component of a, of a very large budget, but it's complex.
But the tourists keep coming and keep spending that money.
Yeah, and they, and they currently are paying taxes, bed taxes and, and city sales tax, as anyone else does on a good or service.
Can we add an emergency service tax?
A conversation we can have in the future. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the comment. Yeah.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm confused. I would like you guys to straighten something out to me. Up till this evening, I've heard that this tax rate, point zero six-one-six-seven-one-eight was based on $100,000. That's been in all the literature to the public. And now I'm a little confused because you made no mention about the 100,000. Now all of a sudden, you're just throwing $100 at us. Can you tell us at least that you were wrong by putting out that information? Or explain to the public how it's $100 now and not just gloss over all of the information before that said that that rate was based on $100,000?
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Boyd. I'll actually turn that over to Ms. Olson. If, I'm using the $100 because that's what's on the screen right here, just so everyone can follow along. But the truth in taxation was, was a little bit different. So, Ms. Olson?
The $100,000 number was just an example that was put in the explanation of the notice that we put out related to the property tax levy so that people would have an idea that for every $100,000 in assessed valuation, for whatever your house is, for every $100,000 that the, yeah, the rate would change by that, by $2.85, I believe it was.
Yeah, Mayor, if I can, and Ms. Olson, I think probably a better, a good explanation, really concise, is it's 67, 67 cents per $100? Or $67 per $100,000? Uh, it's the same number. It depends on how you look at it.
That's true.
And if we do it per 100,000, that's an assessed value, and we can all do the math in our head of what our property is. But as from a state statute, our property tax rate is 67 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. Same number.
Thank you. That's good.
Mayor?
Thank you.
One of the, one of the things we do is truth in taxation. We put these notices out to the citizens to review and listen. Then we have public hearings on them. And then as soon as we leave here before we vote, I end up getting a lot of emails, a lot of conversations. I talk to a lot of people, and now we're here to vote, and I'm just basically hearing, telling you what I've heard out there. And I just want to be compassionate and maybe help with some of the concerns that they had. And so again, I know it's a long process. I know we look at it all. But realistically, we don't get feedback from our constituents until it goes public and people hear our conversations. And they've been hearing our conversations, and they're, they're pretty tied up, they're pretty stressed out there. And times are tough for them, and we all have jobs, and we're all doing pretty good. But these are the little things in life that they sometimes just need the city to say, we can afford to absorb maybe $100,000 in tax levy.
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell, we're gonna get the public feedback, and then we can bring it back to council. But we did have that truth in taxation notice on June 14th and June 21st as, as well. Ms. Toy, did you have a comment?
Yeah, yes. I do have a question, well, maybe a comment. I just want to say that as far as public feedback goes, I really appreciate Ms. Campbell suggesting the lower tax rate. One, it, it's not that I don't want the police and fire department.
Yeah, no, Bonnie, you're addressing the council, so please do so.
I do want the police and fire department and aquatic center funded, obviously. First, when I saw the numbers, I didn't understand that the 67 cents meant the one hun, every, for every $100 out of $100,000, you're only being charged 67 cents. Also, when you say that by lowering it 102 cents, by lowering it two pennies, that somehow you're gonna end up losing $100,000 out of the whole budget? Maybe not buy lights for the bridge next year? But there, there's gotta be, the one thing you're not thinking about when, as she said, how it would help citizens be able to buy new homes to have the lower tax rate just by that one little bit? You're not including in the, I think the right word I want to say is, well, I don't know what the right words are, but how people feel. So if you give up those, that $100,000, if that's the right number, and you take the extra time to lower the tax rate for the citizens of Lake Havasu City, what you're gonna get is some really feel-good from your public who live here. Two cents. Okay, so maybe it's gonna cost you a little bit of extra work. But I tell you that being kind to your fellow citizens is worth the extra work. That, that's what I want to say.
Yeah, thank, yeah, thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter?
My name is John Scroll. You don't really address the, what's the evaluation gone up over all the resales? I mean, they, they've paid 200,000 four, five, five, six years ago, went from $400,000 to $500,000 now. That all went to your tax base. And how many, how many houses have closed escrow this year that were new builds? That you're, are you taking that into account on what going on with the tax base? Well, I'm not trying to knock it down or bring it up, but I don't think that's running the route up on how much more tax evaluation has been for the whole city this year on resales and also new builds.
Yeah, so if you actually look on the screen above, you can see the primary assessed value that was adopted last year versus this year. So what is that, about 60, 60 million of, of increase in valuation, assessed valuation for the community?
So your, your rate's gone up that much, and you're, you're making that much more money off of that?
I know, so then look at the, the line right below that, and that'll show that the revenue difference is approximately 300,000.
And so when you did the budget six months ago, whenever you planned this, I'm not trying to pick you out, but just when the budget was done, you said this, you've already factored that money in that you're had coming in then?
Correct, yeah. We, we factored this proposed rate. And that's how we did the math calculations so that we knew how to fit the rest of the pieces of the puzzle. So how many additional officers can we have? How many additional firefighters can we budget for? It's based on, on the predication of that, that rate that council gave direction to. Yes. Yeah, thank you for your question. Would anyone else like to address the city council? All right, seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the, the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Moses?
Yeah, I feel the need to weigh in.
Yes.
I, I, I look at this as a net zero business. We, we take in enough money to provide the services that a city should be providing, and that's it. And I kind of always equate it back to my simple business of just flipping burgers and, you know, serving food to people. I, I, you know, you, you gotta make sure that we can keep the lights on. We gotta make sure. We got to make sure that we can accomplish all these goals. And that there's just so much uncertainty. I've been swayed a lot. Like I was pretty firm before this and then I'm hearing all of you and like, yeah, it would be nice to do something nice. But we just, I don't think we can in good faith do this right now. I don't think we know the costs of things as they come up. And I just think there's a lot of unknown. And we, there's a very complicated formula that we have to look at to make this city run. And there's so many variables to just willy-nilly affect our formula. Wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't be fiscally responsible for the, for the city and making sure that we're, we can keep the fire engine showing up and the police showing up and all of those services that we provide. This has been a really hard one for me because, you know, we should take only what we need. We have been taking with, you know, with the huge increase in sales tax, we have been taking more. That could go away in an instant. I just don't know. So I need a little more data. I need a little more time to see where all these things are going to fall. And then absolutely, in next budget session, I would love to really look at this and see how much do we really need? But I think too much is still kind of up in the air. And we got to make sure that our police are taken care of and showing up and handling our safety of our community and everything else that goes in it. Water, everybody else. So I really appreciate everyone's input. I've heard a lot. Facebook, social media, here at the council meetings, and I appreciate all of it. I just don't think I can do it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Coke?
Thank you, Mayor. As well, this has been a hot button topic for the last few months especially. But as Councilmember Moses said, this isn't the right, appropriate time for us to do this. If we want to look at this, I absolutely think it's necessary to look at. But we need to start it in the budget process and we're having the conversations when we're having this, directing the staff on what monies we need, where we're going to spend, where we're going to cut, what we're going to do. Right now at the final hour is not the time to start throwing out numbers and changing things. But the thought is there, the concern is there. And I think we definitely have to have it on our radar in this next budget year. And hopefully be able to make some positive changes for the community at that time.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Lane?
I'm ready to make a motion if you're ready.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one question?
Yes. Councilmember Lane?
I just want the citizens to know, I'm empathetic. I'm understanding where your concern is. My question is, if we were, which I'm, it's not looking that way, were to take the difference to the .65 and we had to take a difference of 100,000 dollars, would that come out of fire and police? Is that where we would take it out of the services? I mean, because we keep saying that, I'm just curious, we keep making that comment that that's where we would take it out. Is that where we would take it out of?
Mayor, council, I can, I think in terms of what that looks like, I'd sit down with the department heads, I'd sit down with police and fire and all the other general fund recipients that are funded by the general fund and said, where are we going to cut? Police, fire, parks, courts, development services, admin services. Those are, these are all departments that are funded through the general fund. We'd have to identify it from there. I don't know, I don't know the answer to this. I wasn't prepared to, to cut X amount of dollars out of the budget on short notice.
I'm just trying to understand what that, because we keep saying that and I don't want to be a proponent and say, yes, cut our fire and police. I don't want to keep saying that, that we're going to take from fire and police. It's $100,000. We spend $100,000 every other time we're voting on things that that, you know, the citizens never come and weigh in and they're weighing in on something like this. It's $100,000. We give them a little bit. I understand what Mrs. Toy is saying. I know we're not, what way the vote's going to go tonight, but I just want people to understand that by the way I'm going to vote does not mean I want to take away from fire or police or any of our departments. I think it's $100,000. There's wiggle room there. We have a lot of revenue coming in right now. So that's just, I want to explain my vote tonight.
Mr. Mayor, can I make another comment?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan.
There's a difference between democracy and republic. I'm elected by the people to make the decisions. I'm the ones that sat through all the budget meetings. We have a budget process. We have a, then why have the process? I mean, I think it'd be very irresponsible for me to cut a number that I have no idea where it's coming from, no idea where it's, I don't mind having a discussion, but let's do it at the right time. I encourage everybody to come to the budget meetings. We have a lot of them. We go through this whole process. We can have this discussion at the right time and then the staff can go back and know where it's going from. But at very last minute to be like, oh, I just want to change this at the last minute as a symbolic gesture. And like I said, $2, $3, $4 a year, I'm sorry, is a symbolic gesture. I think we can do more for the community with that money. And we don't even know where it's coming from. I just think it's extremely fiscally irresponsible for us to do this at the last minute. I mean, I don't, like I said, I don't mind discussion, but everyone criticizes the government and it's like, it's not broken just because you, we don't know how it works. We, 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 people want transparency. We have transparency. We have meetings. We've had these discussions. Like I said, I encourage people, come to council meetings, come to these meetings, know how they work. It can be very boring sometimes, but we go through all these topics. But to come in and do it at the last minute, it's like, honey, we can buy the car. I did the math. Let's do it. It's just very irresponsible. And for that, for that reason alone, it's not something that I don't want to help the people. I think it's extremely irresponsible just to change a number. We don't know how much it is. It's like an algebra equation. We haven't even taken the time to calculate and we want to approve it. We have no effect and have no idea how much money it even is. So for that reason, I am a no.
Yeah, so.
What can I do to make a statement to that? Basically, why do we do a truth in taxation? Why do we do a public notice so late in the game then? Why don't we do it earlier on so we can have these discussions earlier? And because I'm sure most of the, I know when we're sitting in the budget sessions, there's not nearly as many people here. They read it in the newspaper, then there's an article in the newspaper, then they're contacting all of us. And I'm just trying to do what my constituents are asking for and they just want a little bit of help out there. And that's where it's coming. So to think that it's fiscally unresponsible, to be waiting this late in the game is not, what's the point of doing the public notice this late in the game then?
Yeah, so I'll answer your question, Councilmember Campbell. And then I'll make a statement, then maybe turn over to Councilmember Lane to make the motion that he was looking to do. So it's statutory. It's required by statutes how that is done. So the very first thing we did during our budget hearing was talk about the tax rate. So if we didn't give staff the tax rate to make the calculation, they wouldn't know and how to put the rest of the things together. So some of the things that we've done and we directed staff to do that are part of this budget was we have additional money in for firefighters. We have additional money in to increase code enforcement. We said and did all of these things and that's where all of these numbers are based on. And when we have our budget hearings, they're all televised, they're all open to the public. Everyone is there. Certainly people don't engage in the budget process because it takes many, many hours, but they're on Channel 4 and replayed and available on our website. I don't disagree that we should take a look at this going forward for next year's budget and how specifically that looks and how the impact of increased assessed valuation. We've left the rate the same for five years. Five years, this is our fifth year we would be leaving the rate the same. Prior to that, the rate fluctuated and it went back, back and forth based on, again, whatever was predicated on the priorities. I didn't hear, so I've heard some council members mention that, listening to our citizens and your feedback and what you're thinking, I have not heard about lowering the rate at all prior to this meeting. This is the first time I'm hearing lowering it by 2%. I talked to a lot of people, but what I do talk to and hear is how citizens really enjoy our parks and how they love when they call 911 that we show up and that when they need us, we're there. And I hear that every day. So I haven't heard anything about a tax decrease besides today. I am empathetic to it. We'll have those conversations during the next budget process on what that looks like based on priorities that citizens set for us and what those all come to be. So I don't know if, Councilmember Lane, if you still are interested in making a motion?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 22-3596, adopting the Lake Havasu City property tax levy rate at 0.6718 per $100 assessed value for fiscal year 2022, 2023.
Second? We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Vice Mayor Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries five to two.
Thank you. Item 8.3 is Adopt Resolution Number 22-3597, adopting a property tax levy and certifying the annual financial requirements of Lake Havasu City Improvement District Number Two, the London Bridge Plaza for fiscal year 22, 2023. Ms. Olson?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the assessment that provides for the maintenance and operation of the London Bridge Plaza, which includes the parking lot, the electric, electrical service for the lights, the water bills, all the water service, and then the landscaping for that area. So we do levy the rate for $100 at .7370, which that remains the same. And again, due to increased valuation in that area, the assessment will be $16,110, which is like $600 more than what it was in the current year. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Are there any questions for Ms. Olson? Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
All right, here I go. Councilmember Moses, do you think you're getting $16,100? Or let's go back, last year, did you get $15,574 worth of your value? I mean, worth of maintenance in the parking lot? Can somebody tell me, what does that actually cover over there? I mean, where do we really spend the money at that?
Mr. Knutson, did you?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, all the items that those funds are to be used on are identified in the original resolution that was adopted by council for the creation of this district. In essence, we're talking about the parking lot itself, the restrooms and landscaping and and whatever $16,000 can cover over the course of 365 days.
Yeah, so this tax, this special taxing district is, was put in mind with the ability to have the swap meet on Sundays down at London Bridge Plaza. And so in order to do that, those property owners at the time came to council long before us. And the council did a resolution. There's an accompanying agreement. There's also restroom facilities down there that are open on Sundays during the swap meet. It cleans those facilities and takes care of the parking lot areas.
Do you mind if I wait?
Yeah, please, Councilmember Moses.
I didn't want to interrupt Nancy. I'm really confused by that whole situation. I've been confused since we opened Chabones that long ago. Is it the city's? Is it because there's an association involved? Does the city actually give the money to the association to operate? Like, do we ever cut a check to the London Bridge Association or whatever they are?
To my knowledge, we do not. We pay the bills directly. We take care of the landscaping through a contract with the landscaping contractor here in town and we pay the water bills and the electric bills.
But then they maintain the parking lot?
They, I would say they oversee the management somewhat. They're kind of our eyes and ears and they let us know when there are any issues that need to be addressed. If we have additional landscaping, maybe that got missed. So that's our participation.
Okay. To answer your question, Nancy, no. No, I don't, I don't think we get the value out of that. Kind of one of my things was like, I'd actually like to see that whole district built into a real district. Like there's really, there is a lack of landscaping. There's lots of trash from the swap meet that isn't taken care of, all those things. And so I'm like, well, like, I almost would rather see it be more and actually build it up if they're actually going to keep the taxation. It's just, it's a weird relationship to me. And, and part of me is like, well, you know, why is it there? And that, that was all my question, kind of the same thing you were going at too. In that same respect, I'm going to have the same the same attitude towards this as I had towards the last taxation. It's something I think we should look at moving forward. I'd really like to figure out this, this relationship with the, with the association and if they're even going to stay in existence and and really kind of fine tune who's responsible for what and where that money goes and, and what, you know, just how it all happens. Because I've actually heard different stories on if we cut them a check or not. And mind you, I trust your opinion a little bit more than, you know, the Joshmo that I heard from the street, who was a part of the association at one time kind of deal. I'd imagine you're a little bit more knowledgeable about it than he was. But, but still, I'd like to really, really hone down on why this is in place and why we still do this. And if it's because, well, this is how we've always done it, maybe we look at if we still need to do it. Or get serious about it and yeah, let's build up that district because that is a great commercial node that could, that could really attract a lot of business down there. So, my two cents.
And my concerns about this is previous history that I've had. I had businesses on Main Street, which I paid into the Main Street District X amount. And then I got assessed like $9,000 because the things that they were supposed to be fixing. So also the gas light district and part of the golf course had the same thing. You got this gas light, you got this gas that went to it. And I paid into it every year for 20 years. And then the gas light rotten at the base fell over and they cut off the gas and they continue, I don't know if they still do those or not, and probably still getting charged for it. No, did we pull that off finally?
Yeah, we would have another item on this agenda.
Okay, that's what I figured. I figured those two must have been changed. But realistically, I'm a person that says taxation with representation. And if a business owner pays X amount for XYZ to be done in this particular area and this is what they did the contract for, I would truly like to see that happen. And we're going to move on to the next topic as well, which is very concerning to me as well, but we won't go there yet. So what I asked you, you're feeling pretty comfortable at this .73 and $16,000. You're good with that? Yes.
I do not see the value from my business. I do not see the value from my business standpoint. But, but like I said, there's a very complicated formula that we put in place to, to fund the city. And I'm willing to look at that along with property taxes next year when we go through the whole process again.
Councilmember Lane?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't know if you can answer this question. How many of those businesses in that area are paying this .73?
I do not have that information.
I would, I would imagine all property owners. So not just businesses, but owners of lots.
No. Okay. And my second question, I don't know if you can answer it. I'm just curious of why this tax levy in this specific area is .73? And then when we're going to look at next, I don't even know if we can talk about that, is only .50? What is the difference? Why is one at .73 and one at .50?
Just the formula they came up with.
It's all based on formula.
They're all different.
Expenses within those individual districts. Yeah. So please know a lot of these, these districts were self-imposed. These were just the pass-through. So these are, these are districts that these property owners came to council for some sort of arrangement at one time. And I don't see any members here and I haven't received any phone calls from any of members of this particular association regarding this item, although I've talked to them in the recent past about different things. I mean, these are all self-imposed. These are things that were just the pass-through to allow these things to happen and occur for, for them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just because, because of the last couple of weeks in that the council's not asking enough questions, I just wanted to clarify so that the public knows we're asking those questions, so that we know what the answers are. So that's why I'm asking these questions, because we look at it, we vote yes, and then And then later on, people ask us questions. So now I just want to have the answers. How many people are down there? Are they okay paying it? If they're okay paying it, then I'm okay with them paying it. And I'm just curious, you know, I, that's, I just want to make it clear that we are reading the material, but we're only being able to digest what we're given us. So that's why I'm asking the questions.
Yeah, great questions. And, and I think that's a great point as well, Cal, Mr. Mayor, that, that is 100% self-imposed. Every single property owner down there signed on to this to make this happen. It just may be a little antiquated.
Mayor, is there any way, moving forward with businesses that I have, I can do a budget item? For instance, if I had $16,000 coming in, I'd like to see it expensed out to make sure that the businesses down in that area are getting every red cent that they're putting into that. I don't think that some street over there or some other, maybe even another commercial node that's not paying into it doesn't, reaps the benefit of what you guys are doing. So I would just like to support what you guys have down there, and I just would like more transparency with that.
Yeah, so I can guarantee you that the Budget Sustainability Office that gives Jill, Ms. Olson, and her team awards year after year for financial accountability would not allow for this not to happen. These are separate funds that have to be identified and expensed out. And we get glowing reviews every year because of the work of Ms. Olson and her team. It's all available. It's on the website. It's on the website for last year and the year before and 10 years ago. And so-
But this is lined item out. You could absolutely see everything that you spend on that. Okay, that's what I would like to see.
I'd like to drive that point home too. I don't think that we're misusing or anything like that. It's just a matter of, is the value there or not?
All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Yeah, just make your way to the podium. State your name for the record, please.
Don Wisdom. Okay. The Christmas lights we had last year were beautiful. Is the Christmas lights included in this $16,000?
No, this is just the London Bridge Plaza area, which is primarily the area the swap meet's located.
Who pays for the Christmas lights?
The city did. So the city general fund paid for Christmas decorations along the Main Street corridor.
So they're going to renew it again this year?
Yeah, they'll, they last for several years. They are beautiful. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, they last for several years. Thank you.
Another program.
Yes.
Good evening, Frankie Lyons again. My question is, out of the $16,000, that was, is there, how much of it was actually spent? And what was it spent on? Because it doesn't seem like they didn't do any repaving out there or anything like that. And landscape is like nil. They get a lot of rocks, you got to rake. The bathrooms had to be repaired. Somebody drove through it, I think, one time. But where's that actual $16,000 plus going to? And how much was left over from last year?
Yeah, thank you for the questions. I don't know if we have those specifics, but certainly it's done for the bathroom, bathroom maintenance. We're talking about $16,000 a year. So we're talking about roughly $1,200 a month. We have a monthly landscaping contract and bathrooms. I think just that explanation alone shows that the money is going to that. But Ms. Olson, I don't know if you have any additional specifics?
We do charge, we pay for water and sewer bills for that area and the electricity for the area in addition to the landscaping.
Thank you.
And like I, I want to reiterate this, there's more to it. This is a complicated relationship between the association and the city. So like, the association actually repaves the parking lot every few years or so. And they do that with money that they gather from the lot, the rental sales of the swap meets. So it's a very complicated situation. And, and that's all. It's, the $16,000, I guarantee you, isn't going towards repaving the parking lot.
Yeah, I would think repaving the parking lot would cost more than $16,000. I had an odd question. I'm really sorry, because I don't know where to go look for the answer. And I figured now would be the time to ask the question. It was this one and the next item also, are you have separate tax districts? Like, it says Improvement District 2. Does that mean only the people in that area are taxed? Only them? And then not the rest of the city? And then why are there multiple tax districts versus just one tax thing?
Yeah, that's correct. So each, each of these districts on their property tax would have the general property tax that we talked about in the previous item. And this particular district would have an additional assessment based at this rate that we're discussing. And again, that was, that was self-imposed by those property owners came to the city and said, we would like to tax ourselves additional rates so that we can do these types of things. And so it's commonplace that certain neighbors or certain neighborhoods or districts would come and form some sort of a taxing district. State law has changed over the years, so it's, it's a little bit different during different cycles. But that's the overall goal, is that they are self-imposing this on themselves.
How many districts do we have?
We just have these two districts that we'll be talking about this evening. We have the general property tax, then we'll have this special district, and then one in our next item.
Yeah. But overall, how many tax districts do you have?
Those are the only, so if there's one for the general property tax, and then if you are in these special districts, then you have that assessment. And that is it from Lake Havasu City. There are other ones, as you may have seen in the video earlier, from the county, the school district, the community college, library district, and, and others.
On the, okay, thanks.
All right. Would anyone else like to address the council on this matter? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 22-3597, adopting the Lake Havasu City Improvement District Number 2, London Bridge Plaza, property tax levy rate at 0.7370 per $100 assessed value for fiscal year 2022-23.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan, and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, item 8.4 is Adopt Resolution Number 22-3598, adopting the property tax levy and certifying the annual financial requirements for Lake Havasu City Improvement District Number 4, the McCullough median for fiscal year 2022-23. Ms. Olson?
Thank you again, Mayor. This is the final improvement district. This one is referred to as the McCullough median. It's the median along McCullough. It includes the maintenance of Wheeler Park, all of the landscaping on that, on McCullough Boulevard from Smoke Tree to Lake Havasu Avenue. And again, like in the previous item, we, this pays for all of the electricity and water service and landscaping associated with maintaining that area. And those funds as well are kept separately, and the expenses are tracked separately as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Yeah, so again, this rate's staying flat as well from the previous year. Are there any questions or comments from members of the council?
We'll get, we'll get through this. But I'm just, I'm talking to people, and they're talking to me, and they have concerns, and that's why we have public hearings, I guess. I, I've reached out to many landscapers as well. Is this a product, we don't, we don't send this out to contract. This is our city staff that does this, correct?
City staff does this.
Okay. And after this came to the agenda, I, I went up and down the road to try and see what it looked like. And I, no offense, we have some dead trees and the back end of it has palm trees that, some of the palm trees are cut, some of them are not cut. And I think the $63,380 is a lot of money. And I had my constituents call me and say, if you're spending that much money, why aren't they finishing the arch? Now, there's a good conversation for us, right? So again, I'm going to be voting yes on this one with the intention of hopefully we can increase the staff's ability to make it look better than it is for $63,000, and possibly consider moving forward with putting the arch in there with maybe these funds. Maybe it's not this year, maybe it's next year, maybe whichever. But I don't know how that looks, or if that's even possible, because the arch is part of this beautification. Is this correct? Is that right there?
No. Yeah, the arch was never part of the city. That was the footings that were poured for, for a potential arch in an area that has visual impairments to the traffic signal was done by a private association. The city has never been involved in that at all. That's not been-
So what are we going to do with that?
Well, that would be for a future discussion item. When, it's not on the agenda. We can't talk about that.
But it is in the beautification area that we're talking about.
And I've answered the question that it's not-
It is. It's between, in the median area, right there. So again, we're not going to be talking about it. I personally, I had one gentleman tell me, it's the median in the middle of McCullough that if it's beautiful, including Wheeler Park, everybody enjoys that. And those business owners, now one of the business owners has turned to Light Industrial even, are thinking, why do we have to spend that much money to beautify a right-of-way, city right-of-way, and Wheeler Park that everybody in the community enjoys? And now a big part of Wheeler Park is in front of Light Industrial that doesn't even really get much foot traffic? So again, I would not even have brought this up in the budget session. I wouldn't even have looked at it in the budget session until everybody came and started to talk to me about it. So I'd just love to hear anybody else's comment on this.
Thank you. Councilmember Moses?
I kind of feel the same way about this as I do the previous two. I think it's something we need to look at and see if it makes sense. It's, it's a median and a cool little park, Wheeler Park, that, that is used. But yeah, maybe, maybe, you know, that'll be absorbed into the general, general fund if we get rid of this. But again, this was self-imposed by businesses with 100%. I believe it has to be 100%, right? For an improvement district to come into existence? So 100% of the property-
100% of the property owners are paying it. But state law-
For an improvement district to be voted in, what percentage? I'm sorry.
Well, current, current state law might be different when this district was put in. The law changes. I'm scared if you're prepared with that information.
I'm not, I'm not prepared. I don't know what the law is when this was adopted in 1987.
I would assume it'd be a majority.
Yeah, but yes, today, to create a new district, there's different, there's, there's different districts, and there's different creations for each district. So we have to be very specific on what we're talking about. But yes, there's some percentage of the, of the property owners have to either be in a petition or an election or have some sort of process to agree to be taxed additionally.
Absolutely. So I'll, I'll change my statement and go from 100% because, and we'll just say a majority of the business owners at the time deemed this necessary. And maybe we take a look at this in the next budget session.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the council?
Just, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Michelle.
I'll direct the meeting. Councilmember Lynn?
Again, can you just tell me what the biggest expenses? I think you had the, from the last one. Can you tell us what the biggest expenses there?
I, I don't have the details on that one. I, I was, I heard there was going to be a question on Improvement District Number 2 late this afternoon. We were able to pull those numbers together. But I would assume internally this, that the in-kind, you know, the labor associated with staff doing the maintenance would be the largest portion of that bill.
You know, it's, it's a, it's a big area down in this area. And at the time-
It's more than a median.
Yeah, well, yeah, at the time, this goes, this goes all the way from Lake Havasu Avenue all the way up to Smoke Tree. And at the time, property owners, and I'll turn over to Ms. Faulkner, but at the time, like everything in Havasu happens, is someone has a great idea, and they say, how can we make it happen? They come together and they say, let's put this improvement district in, and we can create Wheeler Park and, and in these median areas and beautify the area. And that's what occurred all the way back in 1987. So, Ms. Faulkner, do you have an answer to that?
Yeah, I've had, I'm asked to chime in here from the city manager. Yet Angela's correct. The maintenance is $51,400. That's what we give to the Parks and Recreation Budget to do the maintenance. And then that next would be the water and sewer at about $6,000. And then they have a couple of these after that.
Excellent. Did I answer your question? Councilmember Lynn? Excellent. Thank you. Right, are there any other questions before we open the public hearing? Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
I just want to make a statement. We've been working on this budget now for eight months? 10 months?
10, yes.
10 months that we've been working on this budget. We've adopted the budget. We knew what the tax rate was going to be. This was the final step where we actually had to approve the adoption of the tax levy rates. It's the very last night that we're even going to be discussing this. So if you want to have this discussion next year, could you bring it up at the beginning of the budget? And not at the end of the budget on the very last night? It would really make things a lot simpler. Thank you.
Well, with all due respect, I am a new council member person, and this information is just getting out to these people now so that they understand it. They're coming to talk to me. I don't know why they're talking to me, and they're not talking to you guys. But I'm, I will, you've all been warned. This is where we're going next year. Hopefully, we'll have further conversations about it. But I respect what you said, Councilmember Lynn. And I hate to be holding this up, but I don't want to push yes and not be answering some questions to the constituents.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond, with all due respect, I totally understand that. You should always get your questions answered at the right time. And I, and I understand, you've been doing this for two years. This is your second budget. It's only the second one you've done. But let's do this at the beginning of the system, if we may, and not at the very last minute. So if we change all these things now, it messes up the entire budget that we've already approved. So thank you for that.
Mr. Mayor? Vice Mayor Dolan?
Just to clarify too, I mean, I know you're new, but I don't mean it in a grating way. It's just, people, you said that people may not come to us. People do come to us. I do, I do feel a lot of these questions. But like I said, I am voted, I'm, I'm, I was voted to represent them, to come to every single meeting, to listen to everything, to learn everything. And then when they say, hey, that's really stupid. You guys do that other thing and the thing over there. Why do you do that? I don't bring it back to the meeting and just say, but some of my constituents are saying this. And honestly, you do, but I'm not, I don't bring it back to the meeting and say, this is dumb, why do we do this? I, I, I try to explain to them what I know since I've been going to all the meetings and what I know, and to explain it to them. And if I don't, then I go to the staff, I get some answers. I have staff follow up with them. So I, I do have, I do get a lot of these questions as well. But I also try to explain them to them. Because a lot of times when I explain it to them, like, oh, I never thought about it that way. Or, well, they didn't know that because they weren't at that meeting, but I was. So sometimes it's not our job just to, you know, be the voice of democracy where every little thing we hear, we bring back to the council. We, we're there to educate them and explain to them because they elect us to be in the room because they can't be in the room all the time. So there are times we bring things to the council. So I'm just kind of a devil's advocate of, we do get those items. I just explain things to them and, and, and learn about it so I can educate them and so they know more about it, so.
And I'm just here at a public, Mayor, I'm just at a public hearing,
And I'm just here at a public, Mayor, I'm just at a public hearing and I'm wanting to hear what each one of you guys have to say moving forward. So I can learn as well and the constituents can learn as well. That's all I'm asking the questions. I'm getting ready to push the vote, vote button, yes or no. It's on me to do that and I just want to make sure that I'm making the right decision. And I may have voted a different way on the last one, but after talking to Councilmember Moses, I, it changed my mind. And we can't talk to each other behind closed doors. So this is how we talk and this is what I'm doing. And I'm taking up a lot of your time. Hopefully the rest of them will move forward, but these are really important. They're all important issues.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Uh, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter?
Yes, I would just like to say something. Um, a couple of years ago, I was in a city council meeting and before the budget session. Cause I didn't know about the whole ending process. And so I made mention of the fact that, hey, I think you guys should lower the rate of this, um, aquatic center during the summer. And I was told, hey, we can't do that now because it's too late. It's the last day of the session or whatever, and we, we just can't do that. So what you need to do, Bonnie, is that you need to go back to the city council meeting and address the city council again about lowering the rate of the aquatic center. So I have done that all last year. I've said it several times during different city council meetings. Hey, lower the rate of the aquatic center because you will get a feel good for the kids from Lake Havasu who would be able to go there. Whose parents would be able to afford to send them there more than one day during the summer. However, I know I said that several times and you guys, from what I understand, when I called the aquatic center today or looked at the website today for their prices, the prices did not go lower during the summer. And I said that the year before and last year and this year. So I, I've said it for like two years in a row. And I will be saying it again from now on and hopefully until it happens. I'm only saying ten weeks for the aquatic center for the kids and, um.
Do you have any comments on the median?
Yes, for this, what I want to say is that you guys keep saying, oh, well, it's too late, but you're here tonight. It's obviously not too late yet because you haven't voted yes or no on it. And you are able to change things if you want to change things. However, that requires your yes or no vote.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council on this matter?
Good evening. Frankie Lyons here, and my question is, uh, you guys get these questions brought to you within the last two or three weeks. There's no way that you can teach people or talk to people and train them with the information that you have about the past incidents. So I think it's important that you look at what's happening here and now, because so much has changed within the last six months when you guys started your process and stuff. And it's unfair to, um, not understand that these people are asking here and now. And as a citizen, we expect answers from you here and now.
Yeah, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any additional discussion or a possible motion.
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Coke?
Motion?
Please.
Move to adopt resolution number two-two dash three-five-nine-eight, adopting the Lake Havasu City Improvement District Number Four McCulloch Median Property Tax Levy Rate at point five zero four zero per hundred dollar assessed value for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Coke and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Olson. All right. Item eight point five is approve a five-year master services and purchasing agreement with Axon Enterprises, Inc. For digital evidence management, storage, flex two camera equipment, TASER seven, conducted energy weapons and fleet three in-car camera system. Uh, Captain Sterling.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, tonight I ask for approval to, on a five-year master services, uh, and purchasing agreement with Axon Enterprises. Um, this is for our digital evidence platform for managing our digital evidence, our body worn cameras and our TASER devices. In addition, we're adding, uh, the fleet camera system for the in-car camera system. Um, this will all be utilizing the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchase Contract. Um, so kind of a little background for all of you, uh, if you're not familiar. Um, we've been using, uh, TASER International, which is now Axon Enterprise. Uh, this is the end of our second five-year contract, uh, which expires in August. And, uh, for the past ten years, we've been, uh, having this contract to cover our TASER devices and our, uh, body worn cameras. In addition to the, uh, technology that requires for, uh, managing the evidence that we collect. Um, so with our expiration of this contract, um, what happens is we get a refresh of all of our equipment. And, uh, what we are sticking with is the current body cameras that we carry. Um, and the reason we stick with these body cameras is because of the, uh, platform that we're able to carry them. And we have the philosophy of, we like our cameras shoulder and above, um, for capturing the appropriate, uh, angles, um, uh, that are appropriate, especially for critical incidents. Um, in addition, this year, um, we're upgrading the technology and the TASER devices, which, um, we haven't done in ten years. And so we're going to what's called the TASER seven. And so that's a new technology for us this year, a little more advancement in, in that technology, uh, which we've been waiting for. Uh, in addition, this year, we've been talking about, uh, and, and getting an in-car camera system for many years. We just didn't have the, uh, uh, budget to be able to do that. Um, we want to take advantage this year of utilizing the Prop two oh seven monies that have, uh, come in from the marijuana tax. Um, and so, uh, we figured this was a good opportunity for us to get what we believe is a valuable, uh, platform for us to have in-car cameras that face forward and for the backseat and the patrol cars. Um, in addition to that, uh, these cameras will also provide us with license plate readers. And so, uh, that would allow us to be able to, uh, get hits on hot sheet type items, such as if we have, be on the lookout for type of, uh, uh, vehicles, um, as well as stolen vehicles, uh, which would be very nice. Currently, the only, uh, LPR, as they're known, is off the Bill Williams, uh, bridge area that, uh, is run by La Paz County. And we get a ton of hits, um, from that for cars passing through that. So, um, having those in our cars would be a very valuable asset for us. Um, as part of, uh, the budget appropriation, uh, for this year, it's broken down into two separate contracts. Uh, the one is for the body cameras, the TASERS and the, uh, evidence, uh, dot com platform. And then in addition is the in-car cameras system. Uh, for this, uh, appropriations for this year, like I said, the in-car cameras, we're utilizing the Prop two oh seven money, um, for this first year, uh, the twenty-three budget. And we're only looking at about a half a year's, uh, uh, appropriation for that because, uh, if we get the approval tonight, then we're on the waiting list to get that technology. And we're looking sometime between January and March of twenty-three. So, um, so that's why that's reduced. But ultimately for the, uh, this first year, uh, for appropriations, we're looking at two-hundred-and-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighteen dollars. And then any year after that, uh, we'll be coming back to you for appropriations, uh, for that appropriate budget, uh, moving forward. Um, but overall, the total, total contract, uh, for five years is just over, uh, one million, one hundred and thirty-seven, uh, thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And with that, I know there's a lot of information in there, but I'm definitely willing to answer any questions related to this, this program.
Thank you, Captain Sterling. Are there any questions from members of the council? Councilmember Moses, did you have a question?
Uh, yeah, just because he's so thorough, Jim, uh, Councilman Dolan said he wanted to make sure that this is completely necessary. And he volunteered to see the difference between TASER seven and TASER six. So is now the presentation or?
Our testing, uh, units will actually be here tomorrow, so we can definitely meet up with you and, and work that in.
I'm leaving town after the meeting, so unfortunately.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Councilmember Moses.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
I'm sorry, do you have a question?
Yeah.
I just, I, you may not be able to answer this, um, maybe our city manager can. I'm just curious, the, the money funded from Proposition two oh seven, how much money do we get from that? Um, I know this is not even to do with this. I'm just curious of what that looks like.
Mayor, come from Berlin. I don't have that, that number. Um, I can certainly, uh, get it and provide it to you. Um, Captain Sterling, I know, do you, approximately, how much goes to the PD?
I would hate to throw out a number, yeah, right now. I, I, it definitely is one of those funding sources that, um, i- is good right now. And, uh, the revenue is, is, is good for us. And so this was just an opportunity for us to be able to utilize that for something valuable.
I'm just curious of what we're, what we're gaining as a city from that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions before we open the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for, uh, discussion or a possible motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
As long as I don't get tased, I will make the motion.
Please.
I move to approve a five-year master services and purchasing agreement for Axon Enterprises Incorporated for digital evidence management, storage, flex two camera equipment, TASER seven, conducted energy weapons and fleet three in-car camera system, utilizing Sourcewell Cooperative Purchase Contract zero-one-zero-seven-two-zero dash A X N for a sixty-month payment summary total amount with tax of one point one million, three hundred and, I said that wrong. One point one three seven three nine nine point three one.
I'll second. I think.
All right. We have a, a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? All right. We're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. All right. Item eight point six is approve the sole source purchase of a full train membrane replacement and onsite six cassette refurbishment for the North Regional Waste Water Treatment Plant from Suez Water Technologies and Solutions. Mr. Fernando?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here to request the council to approve sole source purchase of a full train membrane replacement for North Waste Water Treatment Plant from Suez Technologies and Solutions. Here is a picture of a, a new train. There are three trains in the membrane basin. Life cycle of membrane is about seven to ten years. In December of two thousand twenty, train three was replaced and March twenty-twenty-two, train two was replaced. This is the final component of the set. And here is a dirty one look like. So hopefully we will have, uh, the last one replaced and we don't have to do this for several years. And here is a picture of our membrane basin, which is located at the west side of the property. This system has a lot of complex mechanical parts working together. So a few words about our wastewater treatment. And our treatment plants produce A-plus grade water. Some of the reclaimed water is disposed by groundwater recharge. This is an aerial view of the recharge site, which is located south side of the treatment plant. The blue dots here, you see this here? Uh, they are actually recharging wells. These wells are called waders, zone injection wells. They are used for disposal of reclaimed water. Currently, there are five effective recharge wells in the well field. These are mainly used in the winter months because we have excess effluent, uh, due to, uh, the golf course is not using that much irrigation. We have about a capacity of injecting over one million gallons a day during our winter months, just for your information. Thank you. If you have any questions, happy to answer.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Fernando. Are there any questions of Mr. Fernando from members of the council? All right. Uh, this is a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open a public hearing. If anyone would like to address the city council. Seeing now, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Dolan?
I always get excited when there's pictures from the water department, so. Not the sewer department as well, but you know, it's interesting to see how things work. I move to approve the sole source purchase of a full train membrane replacement and onsite six cassette refurbishment for North Regional Waste Water Treatment Plant from Suez Water Technologies and Solutions in the amount of four-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand and eight dollars. And to authorize the city manager to execute the Suez membrane replacement proposal.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right. Item eight point seven on our agenda is approve amendment number two to the professional services agreement with D F G, DG Architecture for the design of the second floor buildout of the new municipal courthouse. Ms., Ms. Roche.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. Uh, before you tonight is award amendment number two to the professional services agreement with D F D G Architecture for the design of the second floor buildout of the new municipal court. Uh, just a little background on this project, um, on May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, D F D G Architecture was awarded a professional service agreement to design the new courthouse, first floor and second floor shell. To date, staff has received the sixty-five percent design and the next steps will be to complete the hundred percent plans and construction documents. With that said, staff and the project consultants came before you on June twenty-eighth, the last meeting, and presented the sixty-five percent design layout, what you see here. At that time, staff was given direction to come back tonight with proposal to design the buildout of the second floor with a complete city council chambers. A conceptual layout of the second floor space was drafted by D F D G, which I just had on the screen. I should go back. Um, there you go. Uh, which was also presented at the June twenty-eight meeting. It consists of approximately thirty-four-hundred-and-sixty square feet and will include approximate twenty-six-hundred-square-foot council chambers with a hundred and twenty-eight seats. Two unisex restrooms, a meeting space, a storage room, an audio visual room and an elevator. That's what I have there. Here is a kind of a zoomed in layout of what it might look like. This is conceptual. Um, if awarded tonight, the second floor design would be incorporated into the hundred percent design plans and specifications for the entire renovation. The cost for D F D G to complete the design of the second floor is sixty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. And the preliminary estimate to construct the second floor buildout would be approximately nine-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars. Again, if awarded tonight, D F D G would continue with the hundred percent design and have it completed by the end of August. We would then come back in September with the C Mar agreement for the G M P and potentially start construction in October twenty-twenty-two. And for informational purposes, uh, we would also want to mention that we would amend the agreement with F C I, the C Mar contractor, to include pre-construction services for the second floor bu- buildout in the amount of four thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. That is separate amendment, um, that won't come back to council, but would be approved by the city manager. This amendment can, again, I said, can be approved by just, so that concludes my presentation.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Ms. Roche. Is, uh, are there any questions of members of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Lynn?
I know I've asked this quite a few times and I don't know if it's just going to be given to us at a whole, but again, we don't have any cost on what it is to furnish and maintain the second floor. We not, we still don't have that.
No, so, um, eh, eh, what we did in our last council meeting, uh, was, it was just, what, two weeks ago? Uh, we gave, uh, staff direction to move forward with, uh, this process, uh, based on the design elements that were given at that point. Uh, the action in front of us tonight is that there is a little bit of misconception that we've spent money or committed to money. All we've committed to so far is the design, um, uh, for the ground floor. If, uh, tonight's action is successful, we would have, uh, spent the money, uh, in front of us, the sixty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy dollars to design, uh, the second floor. Um, and what that does is that then allows the C Mar contract to come back, uh, in front of us with a cost not to exceed, uh, for a council then to have the discussion on what, what direction to go. So that would be the, the proceeding with the courthouse. That would be, uh, uh, proceeding with the second floor. Uh, right now, as envisioned, uh, the second floor would be a city council chambers, but it also, uh, in future years would be potentially a third courtroom as the community grows. Um, it also, it would be a community gathering space or a community meeting space. Uh, but if we don't do, uh, in my opinion, if we don't do the second floor now, the cost is going to be so much greater for, uh, for our citizens in the future. If and when future councils or citizens decide that's what we need to do. Um, again, this isn't committing that we're going to do it. This will get us this, the C Mar cost, the cost not to exceed, so we can make good decisions. If we don't have the information in front of us, we're just assuming what the cost will be based on, on our own thoughts or, or some other calculations. So, uh, when it comes to the, the cost to furnish this entire building, uh, that, uh, is not included in, in this design aspect that's in front of us this evening.
Mr. Mayor, so to be clear, the half million dollars that we already spent on the original plans, now we're going to add another seventy thousand dollars on top of that.
To complete the second floor, correct.
So really I'm trying to clarify that. The first half million that we spent, that was only the bottom floor. We, I thought, I remember seeing plans before and now we, I'm just looking at the total plans that were now up to five hundred and like seventy thousand dollars for plans without nothing, right?
Uh, for the ground floor, it would be the, uh, space planning, uh, the, uh, planning and then the actual construction documents.
I guess I'm just really confused why we're coming. We were originally as a council, uh, I don't believe, uh, I mean, I have to go back to dates. When we, when it came in front of the council to, which I voted no on, on the plans, the original plans for half a million dollars. And we saw all those plans. Now you're asking the council to approve another seventy thousand dollars for additional plans to that half million dollar plans, correct?
No, the first, the first plans that we approved were for, for the ground floor only.
No, that the region of, the original plans that you, that we came to the council with and said to this company, please present us with plans. We did not just say bottom floor. They came to us with, because we saw them. We saw the renderings, right?
Yeah, Mr. Knudsen.
Um, the, uh, the direction that was, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Lynn.
Like two years ago?
Um, about a year ago, we, we, uh, we received the less than, um, my time is such a, a tough one to keep track of lately. Um, but, uh, the last direction that we got from council prior to the, uh, the contract with, uh, with, uh, F C I for the C Mar, uh, council came back and said, uh, staff, uh, we want to, uh, we want to spend four point seven million dollars on the construction of that courthouse. Uh, we want a completed, uh, second, uh, courtroom. Uh, we want an, an HVAC system that's, uh, that's, uh, that's in that, uh, in that courtroom. And we want the second floor to be shelled out. That was the direction, the last direction that we got from, uh, from, uh, city council. And that's the direction that, that staff took from council and is, is, uh, presented to you at the last, uh, last, uh, council meeting. So, um, what we're, what staff is presenting a separate item to council for consideration. Does council? Does council want to consider a, uh, council chambers on the second floor? If, if so, um, the, the timing of that, uh, would take place now if we want to incorporate within the hundred percent design documents that, uh, uh, Ms. Roche, uh, spoke about earlier. So if we don't, then we don't. Um, but that's, uh, that's, uh, this, that direction that staff has given, okay?
Okay. Can you go back a couple of slides? One more. Hmm, another one.
That one?
Okay. Really, I'm just really trying to visualize all of this. So we've already spent a half million dollars to do the bottom. Now we're going to spend another what, sixty, whatever, to do this. Now this part that's in the gray, just say this comes back a year, two years, whatever, it'll cost us again more money if we. The gray.
The gray is the first floor that's already been, been done, yes.
Okay.
So it's just that, that green on that second level to the right of the screen.
That's the only part of the second level right there. I'm sorry, I haven't been in that building.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that was.
And so if you, uh, Councilmember Lynn, if you haven't been in that building, the reason why some of this is a discussion is there's already a, a mezzanine, mezzanine in that area that, in that particular section, that is already a second floor. Um, as was described to us at our last council meeting, they would be extending that out. Um, and, and that's the shell that we asked for prior to the direction we gave last meeting to come back with this, this contract.
Seventy thousand dollars for plans to show us this. That's what you're asking for.
To finish the, uh, the design and construction documents to be able to, to build this is the action in front of us this evening.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan.
Um, on the surface of, I, like I said, I kind of think the idea of just of a, of a council chambers is definitely a want, not a need. Um, I, as far as the building itself, I think that upstairs space, that was a big thing I had, was to utilize the space we have. That's why I was very adamant too, that we include the shell of the upstairs in the five point, in the five million, uh, that we had. Um, like I said, we're not approving the million dollars that we think it's going to cost to do it. However, I, yeah, seventy thousand dollars is a lot for those documents, but what I want to make sure is if in the future we decide, and I don't, like I said, if I had to vote right now, I wouldn't vote for a for the, for the second level to be finalized. However, I do think we need the plans with all these plans, so we know what we want up there, so we can have electrical, have plumbing, have everything all done, totally ready to go. We have plans for that shell. We can wait a year or two to finish it, but at least we know because we had those plans and they were incorporated to the original building. We have a panel up there totally ready to go with power. We have water sitting in that area. We're all ready to go with that shell, ready to go without having to do anything to the lower level courtroom. So that's, I, I, I support the, this design for it, but like I said, when it comes to that point of us, do we want to actually prove the, 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 the council chambers? I, I think in the future, we definitely need a second courthouse and I, or definitely second courtroom or third courtroom or maybe a court, possible mixed use room to use for council chambers, but I think it's definitely a want. I think we can continue to use this right now. However, like I said, being in construction, I think we need to be prepared. We can't just keep that shell and then all of a sudden, three years from now, we want to put a, we need an extra courtroom, or extra courtroom, and well, we should have planned on that. We need bathrooms. We need this. We need that. So I just, it's important to, this is just the design and yes, we need these plans to be written by the same persons as doing the plans downstairs, so everything works together, so we're not having. I mean, correct me if I wrong, my fellow construction friend, but I think we just need to make sure that we have all those things in place in case we want to do that second level build out. So that's just my thoughts.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. Councilmember Campbell?
Fellow Vice Mayor, construction friend. Um, I hate the second floor. I don't like the council chambers up there. I don't think it's safe. I don't like the parking. I don't like the street. I don't like the elevator, the one elevator. There, there's nothing about it that I like, and I think if we already have seventy thousand dollars, I've said this before, everybody knows how I feel about this. This is not new. And the other thing is the seventy thousand dollars plus the million it's going to cost just to shell it out. I think I'd rather take a million dollars, put it on our property right over here where we have parking and build something that we can use, because the other thing that makes me worried as a business owner, I don't really think I want to air condition the whole thing when we have a city council meeting till one in the morning and then um, it's different when you're in business, like our planning and zonings and all that. They're usually done during business hours, which is like nine o'clock, and sometimes they're standing room only and I see the parking and then trying to intermingle that with a courthouse just bothers me. And then if we did end up later, because like, uh, Vice Mayor Dolan said, we don't need this. This is not a need right now. It's a want. So if we wanted to do a council chamber or maybe put something else in the, um, you know, campus where we originally planned, something simple that we can use later, it could also be a courtroom, I suppose, later if we needed it. Um, or, like, I don't mind maybe doing the plans for that, but I don't think it needs to be a council chamber. I don't like the council chamber upstairs at all.
Yeah, thank you. Just a clarification that, that eh, right now, the action in front of us is the sixty-nine thousand for the designs and the plans and the construction documents. If we elected to move forward, that million dollars is full build out of the second floor, not, not a shell. That the, the, the shell of the second floor is already in the original agreement that we did for design. Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry, did you have a comment, comment, Councilmember Campbell?
I just wanted to say that the, um, PED, uh, PED is doing one point eight million for eight thousand square foot, yes, down the street, brand new build, everything they need. Again, it's a want, not a need. I think we're way over budget on this project to start with, and as a designer or contractor friend, when I'm over budget, I start just pulling stuff out and I'll worry about that later. It's a mezzanine. It could work now. Who knows? I don't, I don't know what we could use it for, but that's nothing that I'm worried about, to tell you the truth.
But again, we're not, we're not having that discussion now to, if we are for against, uh, uh, the second floor use, but, uh, but by pulling things out.
I'm against.
Yeah, at our last council meeting, you, you had mentioned the parking and the parking facilities. The reason that wasn't included is because we pulled things out. So we just have to, uh, our, our comments and our feedback that we're giving to staff matters. And so uh, now we're asking them to go back and take a look at the traffic plan based on, on your, your great feedback last council meeting, so.
It was the whole campus as a whole that I was looking at, and, um, the parking lots out here, the that's not on the agenda right now, what this campus looks like, but this whole campus needs to be looked at, and I'm willing to maybe look at all of that without. I would rather save the money and, and look at this whole campus than start throwing a million dollars into something that we have to try and retrofit in and it may be dangerous later. I don't know. Uh, we don't have traffic studies. We don't have anything. And again, I know you guys gave the direction. I said I wasn't interested. I'm not going to go back and say the direction is now that I've changed my mind and I think it's great for traffic because I don't like it.
But, but yeah, based on the direction that, that we collectively, we, we speak with one voice based on, on the vote, um, it gave was to move forward with, with the parking, uh, based on your comments last.
Right.
But, yeah, the point being made is just that.
This is not talking about parking right now.
Agreed. What I'm saying is that, uh, if, if we don't do and, and plan what this is going to look like and we start pulling things out to your, your previous comment, that's why parking wasn't addressed until we gave additional feedback at our last.
I am concerned we have enough car, parking just for the courthouse alone. So, okay.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Lynn?
Thank you. Eh, if you could bear with me, because I kind of want to go over some history, eh, if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, on how we got to where we are, because we've actually been working on this project over three years. Um, it, it's been a long time. And, you know, court case filings are increasing every single year. Um, we heard, uh, the magistrate and the, the court staff, they've made that quite clear. Um, I, I believe that the, the, the judge said that we have twenty-eight thousand, uh, customers, um, visitors every year, um, and, and that's a lot. And we don't have the space, uh, where we're currently at. Uh, Mojave County, uh, who has the Superior Court, has the same issues that we have. They don't have enough space. They need room. And they came up with a, a way for them to be able to gain additional space, uh, here in Lake Havasu without it costing any money. And the way they did that was they deconsolidated and told us to get out. And by telling us to get out, yes, that they did tell us to get out. Um, and so what did they gain? The courtroom that we currently use, the staff room and the filing room. So we offered to actually build on to that building and stay over in that facility. And we were told no. The, the county said, no, you, we don't want you to be in this facility, uh, any longer. Uh, you need to move. And there's a lot of political reasons for that. I won't go into those tonight, but it has to do with staffing and payment and all that kind of stuff. So we have to have a courthouse. Uh, the Sixth Amendment to the United States Constitution says that those accused have the right to be represented by a lawyer. They have the right to a public trial without delay in the jurisdiction of the alleged offense. They have the right to address their accuser and they have the right to mount a defense. In this country, you're innocent until you're proven guilty. All of this takes place in a court of law. We have to have a courthouse. We don't have one now, so we have to move forward. When they told us that they wanted us to leave, we actually have, I believe, uh, Mr. City Manager, you can tell me, they want us out by August of next year. Is that correct?
Uh, the existing IGA is through August of, uh, twenty twenty-three, and, uh, they extended a, uh, handshake agreement, a verbal agreement to extend that by a month a month, as long as we've shown some progression by that time.
Okay, thank you for that. So we also, we need to expand our treatment courts. This gives us the space, this courthouse here. Um, you know, the model that has been used for, uh, a long time in this country. We, uh, we arrest, we incarcerate, and then we release them back into the public. Uh, that's a big burden on our taxpayers. And a lot of people that end up in the court system are in there because they have abuse problems and they have mental health issues. The way we deal with those is our treatment courts. We've already proven that treatment courts work. We have a wonderful, uh, nation, nationally known veterans treatment court here, thanks to Judge Colley. We also have a very successful youth court. And we need to expand those courts, and we can't do that in the existing space, uh, renting one courtroom for a hundred thousand dollars, and we've been told we have to leave. So we have to find a place to go. And we started looking for a place. Well, now it shifts from the, the court staff over to the city manager and his staff. And he has to try to find us a place to go. Uh, we looked at our, our facility here. We have some land that's around here and we were talking about, we thought, you know, seven million dollars, maybe somewhere around in there, uh, we'd be able to do that. Uh, but we did, we did a study and in February of twenty twenty, we got that study back. And it said, if we wanted to build a courthouse on this property, on property we already own, it's going to cost us ten million dollars, somewhere between nine and ten million dollars. So we said, you know what? That's a lot of money. We really don't want to spend that kind of money. Um, but we do have to build something that's court, that is acceptable to the people as far as dollars go. And it has to be acceptable to this council as far as dollars go. It also has to be, uh, meets the requirements of the Arizona Judicial Council. They oversee the courts throughout Arizona, and there are certain requirements that we have to meet in order to, uh, to have what is actually a safe and secure and functional courthouse. So we talked about, uh, a building that's right here across from the fire station. You see it out here. It's the big glass building. That was up for sale. Um, they wanted money for it. Um, we made an offer on that building to purchase that building. Um, a California investor came in and offered over five million dollars for that building, which is significant, significantly more than what we paid or what we were offering for it. So, um, then we were put in contact with the owners of ninety-two Tacoma, the old, uh, Havasu Fitness. And they wanted to retire and they wanted to sell their building. And they, we were able to negotiate a price with them for three million dollars to purchase one point six acres. Um, and that is with the, the building there. What it came out to for that building at that time was about a hundred and sixty-nine dollars a square foot. We couldn't have built a building for that. We couldn't have. We got a great deal for the city. That property now today is worth twice what we paid for it. Uh, I happened to talk to the, uh, real estate agent that was representing the sellers at that time. He said he'd love for us to put it back on the market because he could sell it for six million today. Um, but we have a year to, to get that, those renovations done and get out. Uh, we, as a council, um, over all these years, we've instructed the city manager and the staff that we wanted a functional, not an extravagant, a functional courthouse that will serve this community for the next twenty, thirty, or even fifty years. Right now, the cost for doing that with just the ground floor is about five point one million dollars. That's what we've seen here in this meeting. If we go, that's just with, uh, two courtrooms, uh, uh, and all of the, the holding cells, the jury deliberation rooms, um, all that. There will be some additional costs as Councilmember Lynn brought up. Uh, there are additional costs for furniture and IT. Uh, some of that was, uh, kind of, um, buffered a little bit. We sold, uh, all of the equipment that was inside that building when we got it, uh, because it came as is, and we, we got about a hundred thousand dollars. That money can go towards, um, outfitting the building the way that we need it. Uh, we have the option, and that's what we're talking about tonight, of adding, um, this second floor that we're calling it a city council chambers, but let's be honest. We know that the city is going to expand. We're going to need a third courtroom in the future. Um, could you imagine if we didn't build it and, uh, we decide that, uh, five years from now, you know what? We need a third courtroom. They're trying to hold jury trials in the courtrooms below and the, the contractors are pounding on that second story above. The time to build that courtroom is right now. Why the contractors in that building? Uh, don't wait. It's going to cost us more money. It's always costing us more money, uh, the longer we wait. Um, you can look, I, we'll have an item here in a little bit for the, uh, the HVAC at the Aquatic Center. Every year, uh, we try to put it in the budget and it keeps going up. And, and we're having a hard time just keeping it up with that. So it will save us money in the long run to build that on there right now. So when this is all completed with both floors, we'll have a twenty-two thousand fully functional ADA compliant courtroom. We won't be borrowing any money. We're not issuing any bonds. We're not raising any taxes. We're paying cash. And we're doing it for under ten million dollars. Now I hear on, uh, you know, the social media stuff that's going on that, oh, it's a twenty million dollar courthouse. That's not true. It's not even half that. We're looking at all in, three million dollars to buy the, the property, five point one to do the bottom floor and a million to do the top floor. That does not equal twenty million dollars. That's roughly nine million dollars. So we're consistently told to live within our means. We're doing just that. And we're giving the citizens and the residents of this city a facility that will serve them for years to come. And as I said, without borrowing any money, without issuing any bonds and doing what we need to do to satisfy what we need to do to comply with the Sixth Amendment of the United States Constitution. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Councilmember Lane. And with, uh, the C Mar contract, uh, I've heard some feedback from citizens talking about, uh, you know, why now with the inflated costs of, of building and all those types of things. Um, as was reported by, by that contractor at our last council meeting, is when, uh, we come, uh, when they come back before us in September, they'll be bringing a cost not to exceed, where we'll be able to have the discussion, do we want to proceed with second floor or not? Um, and do we want to proceed with the ground floor, um, with a cost not to exceed for each of those different elements? If there's additional savings because of, of changes in the marketing conditions, we actually will receive that back, so we won't be spending those, those dollars. But if something fluctuates in the commodities or the price of, of lumber or, or construction costs, we will not pay any more. So, uh, we went through, we added all of these different safe, safety nets and safeguards in here to ensure that we were being fiscally responsible. So thank you for, for going through that, that history and, and sharing some of that, uh, that feedback. Sometimes we get so close to it that we, we've talked about it and we, we think everyone knows all of that knowledge, but thank you for that knowledge transfer.
And if I may make one more comment on that. All of the information that I gave you is all public record. It's all within the meetings and every single thing I said can be verified. So I know there's somebody here in this courtroom that, that thinks that I'm not telling the truth. Everything that I've said can be verified.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter?
Frankie Lyons here. Uh, as you stated, David, I did call you out on the issue that they threw us out when in fact, three members of this city council, well, two members of the city council and Judge K. I'm not sure that it was on an agenda item that was told to go to the courthouse or to the courts and ask them for deconsolidation. I can't find anything on an agenda item from this city council to do that. Uh, with that in hand, that was done behind, um, basically without the information of city council or the people in the city that you would have negotiated back in April twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, uh, when eventually it was presented to the courts that we wanted to deconsolidate, which they agreed to. We were not kicked out of there, and that comes from Judge Gertler's email that was sent out. Uh, and I will be making that available to the, the community at any time. Then it took place night, uh, May nineteenth, the Board of Supervisors Budget Workshop that, uh, our city manager appeared before the board to speak, saying, let's keep this ball rolling. We don't roll. We make stuff happen for the community, and I feel this was an injustice for them. Buster Johnson said, and I quote, "This kind of blindsided me. I'm not real happy with the fact that I'm finding out after negotiations took place, um, between the city and the county that we're looking at splitting our courts, which means you guys don't communicate. We need to communicate as a city and a county with the people who make us make difference with that." Um, June twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, it was presented by Judge Kalali to the city council as brought before the Board of Supervisors a couple of weeks ago and was approved unanimously. I didn't see anything on the agenda for that either. I didn't see anything on the agenda for that either. And I've asked FOIA through the city for a couple of items and have never received them. So if we can't get information that we're asking for through Freedom of Information Act, what does that tell me about you guys? Somebody's not following up. The deconsolidation then presented as a housekeeping command item under a different agenda item. It didn't have its own agenda item. Some of these people made their decision on that court to buy the court or go forward with this action because they were told we were kicked out. We were not kicked out. Go back to Gertler. Go back to Buster Johnson. I have the documents, and I will be putting those on Facebook tomorrow. This city needs to know that you guys are either working for us or you're working against us. It was already done by the Board of Supervisors. Both needed to be ratified by the city, and that's when you guys kind of voted on it through an agenda that wasn't there, which effectively blocked any discussion by the Board of Supervisors and city council and as well as the citizens of Lake Havasu. And in terms of the cost and timeframe planning concerns, I have never met anybody who is in construction that plans to build a house or anything else that doesn't have a full budget in line. What's it cost? Who are you going to contract with? And what is the best deal that we can get for our community? You guys seem to forget about our community.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor Dolan.
Can I clarify on that? I was running for election in 2018, and I was at a fundraiser where I met Judge Gertler. I'm trying to say his name, Gertler. And he approached me and said, yeah, we need to, now that you're going to be on council, we need to, you know, you need to talk about the courthouse. And I really had no idea what he was talking about. And that basically, even at that point, he said, well, yeah, you guys, we're outgrowing the courthouse. We're going to have to, you guys are going to need your own courthouse. So, but I think you're also talking about two different things. The deconsolidation is the separation of our courts working together. We're still in the same building. We're just deconsolidated right now. There's a difference between that. Them telling us that you can no longer, at a certain point, rent space from us is totally different than the deconsolidation.
Okay, where's the documents on that?
On documents?
Yeah, there's none.
Prove I was at that fundraiser?
No, no. I'm just saying that I want proof that we have to consolidate.
Well, I was there, so that's just a perfect example. So I am curious to see your proof, but I mean, like I said.
You'll see it on Facebook tomorrow.
There's a difference, yeah, because Facebook is always so factual.
I don't care. It's documentation. I'll make pictures of the documentation I got from county supervisors.
There's a difference between deconsolidation and us being asked to move out of the courthouse because they're not going to rent space to us anymore, just to clarify those two differences.
Okay, I need to see something that says you guys got to move out. Every time you turn around, and why you would even deconsolidate in 2019 when you have no place to go? It doesn't make sense.
We have an agreement, a lease agreement that expires next year. So, and then that would be the document that says we have to move out.
So did the other one in 2019, and they redid the lease. So it's not something like set in stone.
At our urging, they redid the lease because we didn't have a place to go. And so you made a comment also about that you've never worked with anyone in construction that didn't have a price to build out. That's all this council's done so far is commit to get plans so we can get to that level. So once the plans are done, it can be costed out, and we'll get a not to exceed contract to come back in September, and we'll be able to make those final decisions.
And why you're making a plan of action for this court, why wouldn't you include everything you need for that court to figure out the plans? $500,000 from the same guy who built it because he already had the layout and the plans laid out. All he has to do is reconstruction walls and utilities and some plumbing. It doesn't make sense to me that we're paying out $500,000 and you don't get a complete plan.
Yes, so the contract in front of us this evening is.
So I understand what it is, but you guys are doing your due diligence when you need a full complete. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The contract in front of us is 7% of the total estimated cost to build out. So, Mr. Knutson, did you have any comments or thoughts?
I guess I would. Thank you, Mayor. Just in terms of trying to be, you know, as transparent as possible in terms of that process, that the communications that the city had with the county. Ms. Lyons, I know you had a FOIA request. I provide a lot of emails to you. If there's more information that you need from me, please let me know. If there's anything that is required. It's that April 1st, 2019 email from Judge Gertler that was part of that packet, where it was the first indication by email through documentation that they wanted to deconsolidate. There were some follow-up emails that occurred where I think that got maybe a little colorful in terms of my response, when the judge and myself are communicating back and forth about what we're hearing from the county. And you're going to see like, arg and ugh, and what's happening, and voicing some of those sentiments through emails. You'll see all that through the documentation that was provided. Again, if I can provide you more, let us know. There's also a tremendous amount of conversations that occur through a contract negotiation, some back and forth at the time. I know Councilmember Lane alluded to the fact that there's, you know, a lot of detail that's there. The county was upset at the time because the city was providing step increases to our employees and a consolidated court environment. And the county did not want to provide those same levels of increases to their employees. The county manager contacted me and said, stop giving your employees increases because we don't want to pay our employees those increases. That was some of that riff that started in those conversations. They wanted, they were running out of room, and they wanted us to move out and jump the gun in terms of some of those conversations. So I just want to put some of that context that's out there. A lot of what happens from the city's perspective happens through emails and communications. A lot of it happens through phone calls and the negotiations. When the county manager calls me and has concerns, we're going to respond in like there. So just kind of want to put some of those things out there in terms of just trying to be transparent. So not trying to stir the pot or do anything. I just want to put all that out there. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Knutson. Judge Colley, did you have some comments?
Mayor, council, thank you. Far be it from me to miss an opportunity to speak. I just wanted to maybe educate all of us, and maybe the council doesn't even realize that as municipal court, I have two bosses. So I have the city council that deals with the finances and says, okay, Judge, this is how much money you have to run your court. And then I have a whole nother boss, the Supreme Court, that says, and Judge, this is how you have to run your court. You folks may not know this, but you actually can't say that a courthouse can be built somewhere or this court can move to another court without the presiding judge of the county saying that's okay. You probably didn't know that, but by law, until that presiding judge says, it's okay for your court, Judge Colley, to move to a different place, I can't even do that. And he would actually, in the end, have the ability to say, and I don't like this. It's not going to work for your court. You can't do it. And I would have to follow, and you would have to follow that. And so I wanted to maybe educate both the council and the community that there are a lot of moving parts in this, and some of it, we don't even have any control over. Thank goodness, both Judge Gertler and Judge Moss, who is now the presiding judge of Mojave County, have been on board from day one on what we would like to do, and they understand the reason for that. And that is that we've outgrown what we have. We've outgrown it. We did it. We outgrew it back then. They realized that we've still outgrown it. They didn't feel like it was right for them to add on to the courthouse that they have to accommodate what we need to do. And so that's why we're here in front of you folks. But they understand that, and they said, okay, great, then let's take it to council. Let's make sure that council decides what they want to do, but it needs to be workable for your court. And so, and something that you folks may not be aware of either is that the presiding judge of any county has the ability to say, and county or city or whatever the entity is, you're not doing enough to run the court. And he could force a municipality or a county to spend money to be able to do something so that the court could actually function. And we don't, that will never happen here. I think we're all on the same page, and I think we can move forward with all of that. But these are some of the things that I have to take into account when I'm saying, okay, this is what I would really like for us to see happen, and that you folks need to be aware of at least as we move forward, that there is a rule, there is a law that says that the presiding judge of any county has the right, has the authority to decide that a court can or can't move or can or can't be in a certain building, or this building is appropriate for that court. And so I just wanted to maybe let everybody, council and the community, know how we interact and that there are different moving pieces for all of this. So that's it.
Yeah, thank you, Judge. Are there any questions for Judge? Councilmember Campbell?
Yes, Judge, I remember when I was running for council and running for council, and I remember seeing all your videos and your files of how many miles and miles of paperwork you had. And you said that you've been able to condense that down quite a bit, correct?
So we, and just, we got rid of, I believe, 30,000 files. So there had not been any files gotten rid of in, probably since the beginning of the. We still have files that are in the 70s, that come from the 70s. Yes, so we were able to, by doing what we needed to do, get rid of about 30,000 files.
Another thing is during the COVID, I remember Colleen saying that she was so happy about getting so much more funds coming through because they could do things online. Do you, am I recalling that correctly? Payments anyways, instead of having people come into the front counter to have to do payments.
So the ability to make payments, a lot of that went online.
That's wonderful.
Yes.
And the other thing that we noticed through COVID that was really cool, when I go to your court, I get to see all the Zoom meetings where that I like to end that downstairs that we had our extra separate Zoom room slash conference room for Zooming, which we've never done in the courts before, which you would think that would eliminate less traffic through the door.
You know, I wish that were the case. Yes, absolutely. I wish it were. The problem that we have, I'm sorry, go ahead. You weren't finished.
No, I was just looking at all of that as a whole. And we have been kind of just maneuvering or rolling like a ball or moving the ball forward. And my only concerns is I know that we were going to have five years before. When I was on council, we had a CIP for five. We had it all planned out, and it seemed like we were going to build a building that was going to accommodate everything that you need and the way you wanted it. And the city council chambers was maybe if we can afford it. And so my only comment right now, I think the only thing we're voting on today is the second floor. And, oh, one more question. Did the council actually, did you, the council, actually vote on the deconsolidation? Did it go onto an agenda item and you guys all like voted to deconsolidate? Did you guys have that inner, because I'm getting this, I'm getting mixed information from people. Like, did you go into an executive session, talk about the contract, how you're going to deconsolidate? Or did you put it on an agenda item that you all voted to go ahead and deconsolidate? Or was that something that staff did? I just want to clarify, I have questions.
Yeah, Mr. Knutson.
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, certainly, the deconsolidation was identified through our annual IGA with the county. We asked them to move forward, and they made the vote and to execute that agreement, if I recall correctly. And then council voted on that as well, too. So we moved from a deconsolidated court in one IGA to a, or consolidated court to a deconsolidated court in the following year. So we have an IGA, historically, we had an IGA with the county that talked about the consolidation and how the breakdown of funding would work in terms of what the employees themselves. There's those costs that were coming from the city that we paid for our fair share of IT, phone, space, and otherwise. And so that language was then updated based on the communications we got from the county and from Judge Gertler, and to the IGA that mirrors what we have today.
And I was at many coffees with the mayor that you guys were talking about that you were working on doing this process. Of course, I was very new, and I was just running for council. I was absolutely confused by it all. But I assumed all the processes were put into place to make sure that the citizens all were aware of what was going on, and I'm sure and hoping that that's what happened. And the only other question that I have, that somebody came to me, and they said that if all courts are all in one place, like they have been all these years, that when you go up to the counter, you might be confused. Like, do you ever have people say, oh, I'm supposed to be in Superior Court or I'm supposed to be in Municipal Court? Or which courtroom do I need to be in? And having one consistent, uniformed staff always will know. Do you find any complications moving forward? I know the deconsolidation has already happened. I guess my question is this, how well are the citizens going to be able to maneuver this change and understand that they're not supposed to be there anymore they're supposed to be there? And this has nothing to do with what we're voting on today. We probably shouldn't even go here. What, do you guys agree? Should we just go back to voting? I'm going to retract my conversation because this is going way too far.
But I guess I would just say, to answer the first question, if we lived in a vacuum and we only had the same number of people in Havasu and only had the same number of citations every year, absolutely. We could do things, and it would make a difference in how busy we were. But, you know, I think last time it was 20% over the last two years that our DUIs have gone up. You know, and that's a large number. I mean, that's a lot of new cases. And so the problem is with all of these, all of the technology and all the things that we're trying to do, we're still increasing in the number of people that are coming through the courthouse in person. And so absolutely, we're doing everything that we can to cut down on who has to come into court and how long they have to be there and all of those kind of things. And even with that, we've still, we've outgrown the footprint.
So again, we're just here for, do we want our council chambers built upstairs? Yes or no?
Do we want to design contract to be able to come forward with a not to exceed contract in the future?
You're right.
All right, this still is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter?
I'm sorry, can I ask just a really weird question? The $70,000.
Could you just pull the microphone down, Ms. Toy? Thank you.
Some people really need to shrink. I don't mean that. $70,000 for the design of the second story part is what you guys are voting on? I was just curious as to exactly what the 70, the design process is, and why is it $70,000 when you've already paid half a million dollars?
Yeah, so maybe Ms. Roche can explain what the construction documents and all that entail?
The original contract was to create a shell, an upstairs shell. There would be no separation between rooms, between the meeting room, the council chambers, restrooms. So in order to build that out, to build the walls, put in the additional electrical, additional plumbing, additional millwork, doors, all of that is included in that $70,000 design.
Okay, but you already know all that stuff. So you're just charging the city an extra $70,000 for that?
No, what we have in front of you tonight is just merely conceptual. They actually have to develop that into a full set of construction plans that can be given to the contractor to build off of.
All right.
We don't have construction plans for the buildout of the second floor right now. The $70,000 will give us that.
Yeah, just like when you hire an architect for your home. Yeah, sure.
The whole design process?
Yeah, when you hire an architect for building your home, this is something very similar. This is the architect creating the plans and the construction documents so we can build this area.
Can I just make a comment, too?
Yes, Vice Mayor Dolan.
I get it. It's really dumb. There's so complex, there's complexities to why we have to get the bids we do and go through. There's a reason why there's a $200 hammer and all this stuff, and it's government. If you want to dig in and fix it, it's state, it's federal. I don't know. It's, we have to guess what we think it's going to cost, put it in the budget, publish that budget, and then all of a sudden, they're like, oh, well, they match the budget miraculously. It's just, it's how government works. I hate it. I'd love to change it. It's nothing that we can do at this level. It's rules we have to play by, mainly by the state level and higher ups. I think it's, I completely think it's ridiculous. But unfortunately, every single time we go into a topic, it's, well, that's so ridiculous. I mean, it is. It's ridiculous, but we're spending $3 million on an air conditioner. It's ridiculous. We spent $2.8 million on a water tank. But unfortunately, that, you know, unless we can find a way to fix it, that is government, and that's the arena we have to play in. We can't hire our own architect that does this and does that, and then, you know, comes in because I can't hire who happens to be my brother, who's the architect. We have to go through all this process for transparency. And when government tries to make things simpler, they make it way more complicated and way more expensive. So just to kind of keep that in mind, sometimes it's, these are the rules we have to play by, and this is the process we have to do to keep the transparency. And, you know, $70,000 for plans on a building like this is definitely ridiculous. If I did this on my own building, it wouldn't be $70,000. But I wouldn't tell them exactly what I was going to pay before I called them and asked them for a bid either. But that's kind of how government works. So just to kind of give, we kind of go around on that.
Although we don't have a quote for your building. We're not talking about that. Those are assumptions we're making right now. So did we answer your questions, Ms. Toy?
I probably.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the council on this matter? All right, seeing that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion. Mr. Mayor, motion? Councilmember Lane?
I move to approve amendment number two to the professional services agreement with DFDG Architecture for the Design of the Second Floor Buildout of the New Municipal Courthouse in the amount of $69,570.
Same.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Vice Mayor Dolan. Any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries, five to.
Motion carries five to two.
Thank you. I'll move on to item eight, which is award bid for the Aquatic Center, um, HVAC project to Comfort Systems USA Southwest. Miss, uh, Ms. Roche.
All right. Thank you and good evening once again. Uh, the item before you is award bid for the Aquatic Center HVAC project. Just a little background regarding this project. In two thousand sixteen, Henderson engineers evaluated the aquatic center's existing heating and ventilation system and made recommendations for improvements to the existing system to install a new cooling and dehumidification system. As most of you know, this time of year, the swimming pool area is very warm and humid. With a new cooling system, the air temperature can be regulated and humidity decreased. Uh, the last slide and this slide are photos of the existing pool area. Uh, the existing system in this area only has the ability to ventilate and heat the space and was configured in such a way that cooling cannot be incorporated in the existing system. However, the existing ductwork that you see there can be reused, which will be utilized in the proposed project. With that said, this project consists of adding air conditioning and a dehumidification system to the swimming pool area, including the upper deck party area, replacing the locker room, air handling units and ductwork, replacing the lobby and office area units, installing new digital, direct digital controls and upgrading the mechanical and chemical storage rooms. We advertised for bids in May of this year, opened the bids in June. Two bids were received with the apparent low bidder being Comfort Systems USA Southwest with a bid amount of three million ninety eight thousand three hundred and fifty three dollars. The engineer's estimate for the project was two million five hundred twenty three, two million five hundred twenty three thousand three hundred and ninety six. If awarded tonight, the project would start in August with a contract time of three hundred and sixty five calendar days. Therefore, we anticipate a completion date of August of two thousand twenty three. I would like to point out that the completion date was our best guess and could change either earlier or later based on the availability of the equipment. And we will know more on that once we, once the contractor is under contract and would place the order. That concludes my presentation.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Roche. Uh, could you move back a few slides just to the scope of the project? Uh, and we just leave that for the discussion. Perfect. Thank you. All right, are there any questions or comments from members of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Dolan?
A couple of questions. What is the age of the building? And then I know, can somebody go into detail as far as I know, we're having with the the issues we have with the current air conditioning, with the humidity and such things and what it's doing to the toll of the building? It's not just we want a new air conditioner, that it's it's a necessity? If they can go into some of the details of what it's, the existing system is doing to the building?
Well, the existing, but I do not have the age of the existing building. Maybe Mike or someone could help me out with that. Um, how?
Okay, nineteen ninety four. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, and the pool area has never been air conditioned. So, um, that existing system is is basically just ventilating the area, just fan unit um, with with the heating system in the, in the winter months.
Okay, so there's no, there's no AC in the main area right now? This is, we'll add an AC to that area to fix some of the issues and to climate control. Okay.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lane?
Mr. Mayor. Um, this is a lot of money. I'm I'm looking at, I'm glad that we talked more about the project description. It's not just an air conditioning. We're spending this money on. Um, I've been on the Parks and Rec Board for eight years now. And the board has been really adamant specifically this year about maintaining what we have. And the Aquatic Center is not a place that we're making money, we know that. But it provides services for our community, especially for our youth and seniors. So I'm, I really support this project. I I don't like the price. But I think my question tonight, and I don't want to go there and I don't want to stir anything, but I, my concerns are I'm going to support this project on where the money is coming from. We're taking it from the general fund, but on here, our funding source also talks about the ARPA funding. And I think my concern is on how the process of how we've discussed ARPA money in the past. And now it's just coming to us right now without a dis. It is a discussion right now, but it's not a discussion. It's being put in front of us. That's how it's going to be paid for without the council really discussing where that ARPA money money was going. We talked about it when it was presented a couple of months ago. But today I feel like it's just being thrown in front of the council's face that this is where we're taking that money. And I don't like that process. So I'm just sharing that I'm going to vote yes on this. I think it's something that the Parks and Rec Board has been adamant about. I think it's something that's great for the community. I'm just putting it out there. I don't like the process of where we're talking about funding.
Yeah, Mr. Knudsen, do you have any, any comments on on the fiscal impact section of the council communication?
Sure, um, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Lynn, I appreciate the comments and and so forth as we're trying to work out, uh, um, how we utilize the, uh, the ARPA funds as we kind of move forward. Um, we had the conversation a couple of months ago when when we talked about the creation of the, uh, Resource Coalition. And we identified council's kind of feedback is about a million dollars for for that effort. And then I don't have the figures in front of me, but we identified like, uh, two million for parks and three million for PDE and a couple, and it's a, and it's a couple of million dollars for for streets. So based on kind of those guidelines, that that's, uh, that's where we're coming here. Uh, please keep in mind, um, that the council should never be be, um, be assumed that they're they're forced to make some type of vote or or otherwise. Uh, every council member has the freedom to make a motion to to say that I uh, either I support the project, don't support the project, or I support the project with this, these, uh, these, uh, these funds. So that should never be a thought or concern from any council member. If it is, I need to, I need to do a better job. So just please keep that in mind as well, too. But I'm, I, the, the presentation, um, from staff, the recommendation for the use of the ARPA funds and, uh, uh, for the, for the balance. Never fund, by the way, when we just approved a CIP a couple of weeks ago, the council did. And then we're identifying a, a project that that exceeds the, uh, the CIP. So that's, that's the reason for the use of the, uh, the ARPA funds. Um, and but, uh, um, hopefully you never feel that way again. Please don't. Uh, let me know if I can help out in any way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan?
Just to back up what Councilmember Lynn said, yeah, I do remember we did say with the, the funding for the ARPA, we didn't want to just throw it in the budget and not have control of it. You know, so we, we, I just definitely think we, in cases like this, we want to know that this is one of those ARPA funds. Because like I said, we, we now can have the discussion and we do want to do it this way. And it's not just a budget item. So I mean, it's kind of, I think, in that gray area where we did want to have the discussion. And now as long as we know that, hey, this is one of those ARPA items that we were talking about, is this how we want to do it? Because like I said, I just didn't want it just to be, go under the budget and just offset everything and we never see it again. So just as long as we know this and then any other future items, if it's, if we're considering it in the ARPA money, just that we, we, we do know about it. So and I I'm okay with it at this level for the, but like I said, just so we know that's what it is before we make that decision. So.
Yeah, Mayor and Vice Mayor Dolan, uh, understood. Thank you. And then just to clarify, uh, we're not talking about the entire project being funded through ARPA funds. We're talking about two hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars, which is the difference of of the low bid. We had two bids. The other bid came in, another four hundred thousand dollars in addition to what we're talking about today. So, but, but yeah, it's the two ninety eight that we're using the ARPA funds, just so everyone's clear and understands that's, that's viewing. Thank you.
Yeah, for those, uh, that don't have the council communication forum, it is available online. Uh, it is clearly, uh, states in here that it's coming from, uh, the general fund CIP plan and then the additional dollars are, are pressed. So it was identified in our council communication, uh, of, of that's where we were going. Are there any additional, uh, comments, Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. And I, and I'm not sure, uh, if the city manager can answer this question or not. Because we've been working on this project for a long time. And it seems like every time we, we try to catch up to it, the price goes up and we have to wait for the next budget year. And then we have to wait for the next budget year. When we first started this, the fact that there was so much humidity is in that building, it was causing problems in the building, which is additional maintenance costs. Um, the fact where that it's taken us so long, are we having structural issues with the building at this point? Um, or do we even know that at this point?
Um, um, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Lane, I think in, in terms of, uh, the building was, 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 uh, constructed nineteen ninety four, as Mr. King indicated. And let's know, um, there is concerns moving forward on, uh, um, introducing humidity inside a, inside a building and what that does for the, uh, the walls and the metals and the steel that, 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 that's in there. So that, that is the concern that we have over the course of time. Uh, we have an old building, an old aquatic center, and we're trying to extend the life of that, uh, that building the best that we can and to save some dollars down the road. And and from my perspective, it's an investment to extend the life of the Aquatic Center and reduce ongoing maintenance costs of that facility. Um, and oh, by the way, those that are, uh, that visit the Aquatic Center are going to see a whole different level of comfort uh, when they, when they enter that building as well, too. But, yeah.
Now, my concern is just that with that humidity, the steel, um, but we're keeping up on all that maintenance as far as we, we're doing now.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for that.
And Councilmember Lane, there was a period of time that we had, uh, the slide closed because of the structural integrity issues of the stairs, because of the humidity. Uh, that took a while to, to get the reserves to pay for that.
Yeah, that, when I first got on council, that was one of the first things we had to do is replace that slide because it had rusted out because of all the humidity.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Campbell?
Um, I have a real personal experience on this, being a construction friend of Vice Mayor over here. Um, I built a building, uh, brand spanking new building. And they didn't put the humidification system in properly, being in a cigar business. It completely got molded out. And I had a, at the time, almost as much to caught abate the whole building. Plus I had to move out of the building. Plus I got very deathly ill. That took me about three or four years to recover. So when this came to the table, um, absolutely, this seems like a large price to me. My kids have been in there. I've left before because it was so hot and so humid. And so it just was uncomfortable for me and my children. And I, I really don't care for the price, but it's absolutely worth every red cent to me because I don't want anybody to ever experience what I went through. And I don't ever want that building to just be shut down with an abatement or whichever may happen later. So I don't really find this as a want. It's definitely a need. And, um, it definitely will keep the integrity of that building up. And the last thing is we want, we do not want mold contamination. Doesn't seem like we have that. But I, I, I ask any of my people here to go down there tomorrow and try and enjoy your day. It's very hot and not only that for our staff, extremely uncomfortable for some of them as well. So I will be voting yes on this. Um, it's just a lot of money, but it's a need.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any additional discussion or possible motion. Mr. Mayor? Vice Mayor Dolan?
Motion?
Please.
I move toward the base bid plus force account for the Aquatic Center HVAC project to Comfort Systems USA SW in the amount of three million ninety eight thousand three hundred and fifty three dollars with funding from the Capital Improvement Plan and American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan, a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Uh, item eight point nine is award bid for the Chip Drive Lift Station Rehabilitation Project to Schofield Civil Construction LLC. Good evening, Mr. Hart.
Good evening. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and and council members. I appreciate you allowing me to come before you tonight. And what I have is a recommendation to award, um, the bid, uh, for the Chip Drive Lift Station Rehabilitation Project. This, uh, is just a brief little history on this project. Um, the Chip Drive Lift Station itself is located not too far from the Mulberry Treatment Facility. It's off of Lake Havasu Avenue and, uh, Chip Drive, which is why it's named Chip Drive. The, uh, the, the, the Chip Drive Lift Station itself was originally constructed in nineteen ninety six. Um, the lift stations, various pieces of equipment are in, in need of, of upgrading. The project schedule is two hundred and forty calendars, which is approximately eight months. Uh, the anticipated completion, I'm guessing March of twenty twenty three, uh, we did issue, or we will issue, uh, if if council awards the, the bid. Uh, we'll issue a materials notice to proceed, which will start the process of the contractor actually going out and securing uh, some firm dates on the materials. Um, we've been told that some of this could be as much as four months. Uh, we're, we're hoping it doesn't take that long, uh, to attain these items. But we're, we're seeing that obviously in a variety of our projects. The engineer's estimate was, um, seven hundred and seventy eight thousand and three hundred dollars. The apparent low bid, uh, that came in, we actually had three bids on the project, which we opened on, uh, June twenty second, twenty twenty two. Schofield Civil Construction came in at one million and fifteen thousand and five hundred dollars. Cure Civil Corporation came in at one million one hundred and forty five thousand. And Technology Construction came in at one million one hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. This project involves, uh, replacing the, the valves, the header piping, uh, the full electrical system rehabilitation, including the three pump panels, the main service upgrade and the lighting. Uh, as you could see on the previous slide there on the left, uh, the equipment there is, is rather old and in need of repair. So we're excited to be able to, um, to finally get this project on, on board. It was originally scheduled for fiscal year, uh, twenty five. But due to the failures we've been seeing, we needed to move it up to twenty two, which is why I'm before you today. Any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hart. Could, could you explain just a little bit about the engineer's estimate? Um, and it, it's, it's off a couple hundred thousand dollars from what the apparent low bidder was? So, um, how, how does that, how do we make those calculations?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So NCS was our engineering consultant. And they've had quite a few projects that entail lift stations. Um, obviously, as we're all aware, the, the market, um, is, is such that it's hard to gauge what kind of bid you're going to get. And and we're tending to see some of our bids come in as high as twenty three percent over the engineer's estimate. When you look at our bid tabulation for this project, you'll note that, um, there was a couple of items. Bid item two, which dealt with the mechanical, um, demolition, the concrete work, piping, the valves and meters. Uh, the engineer's estimate was at about a hundred and nineteen. The low bid came in at a hundred and fifty three thousand. Uh, so that was an area where we saw an increase. Uh, there in bid item six, the all electrical and instrument work, uh, the engineer's estimate was three hundred and sixty six thousand. And that, at the time, when they put their bid, was the numbers they were getting back. And then when the actual bid came in, we came in and we see a five hundred and forty nine thousand. So those were the two, the two major items, um, when we, when we see it. And, uh, it's, seems to be, um, lining up with the rest of the market as these bids are coming in. And, uh, we don't like to have to pay more, but that's where we're at right now. So, uh.
Yeah, thank you for that explanation. Uh, are there any additional questions for Mr. Hart before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Dolan?
Oh, the joys of inflation. I move to, I'll make a motion. I move toward bid for the Chip Drive Lift Station Rehabilitation Project to Schofield Civil Construction LLC in the amount of one million fifteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Dolan, a second from Councilmember Lane. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hart. All right, item eight point ten is award agreement for professional services for the design of the Park Avenue Lift Station Renovation Project to Narasham Hand Consulting Services, Inc. Uh, Mr. Sloan?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Uh, this item is to award the design contract for the Park Avenue Lift Station Renovation Project. Uh, the lift station was constructed almost thirty years ago and the equipment has reached the end of its usable life. Additionally, new development in the area requires some of the equipment to be upsized to handle the increase in wastewater flows. Uh, this slide kind of shows the existing lift station. Um, all the equipment in the back is the older electrical control panels, pump controllers, all of that type of stuff that would be replaced in an upgrade project. Um, the big concrete bolts you see on the ground or the, the wet well and where the pumps are, that part would remain, just the equipment within, inside would be upsized and replaced. Um, here's some of the new development in the area. You can see on the left, that's the new hundred and eight room hotel that's being constructed right now. Um, on the right is showing the proposed new condos, which are right next to the, that lot there. Um, that's already been submitted through Development Services. And this just kind of shows the, the layout of Park Avenue again. Um, like Jason's last one, it's called Park Avenue Lift Station because it's on Park Avenue. Um, mostly has been serving the Aquatic Center its entire life. And now you can see the future hotel. Um, mostly has been serving the Aquatic Center its entire life, and now you can see the future hotel and the condos and the Veterans Center. These are all things that are coming in now, um, and the new development in the area, which is requiring an upgrade of this lift station. Uh, the schedule is to complete the design this current fiscal year with construction starting in the fall of 2023, and that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Are there any questions of members of the council for Mr. Sloan?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Vice Mayor Dolan.
Just a random point. We don't blink an eye when we talk about spending 155,000 on a design of a weird basketball court looking area. But I think this is, like I said, this is government. This, we trust that this is the prices that is good, and it is what it is. But it's like I said, it's just that perspective that I don't know if I could do it cheaper because I don't even know exactly how it works, but it's just perspective.
Any other comments before we open the public hearing? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mr. Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Vice Mayor, or excuse me, Councilmember Lane?
It's been two years.
It's been two years, but it's been a long night, so.
Yeah, I moved to award agreement for professional services for the design of the Park Avenue Lift Station Renovation Project to Narishman Han Consulting Services, Inc., NSC, or NCS, in the amount of $155,720. I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Uh, our next item is item eight point 11, award agreement for professional services designed for the Havasu Pie Number Six Wash Stabilization Improvements Project to Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc. Uh, Mr. Sloan?
Thank you. Uh, just really briefly, I'd like to introduce the newest member to the Engineering Division, uh, Mike Wolf. Mike has over 30 years of experience working on both the private and public sector side on different types of projects. He's a licensed civil engineer and brings a great deal of engineering expertise to the team, and we're excited to have him on board. With that, I'll let him go ahead with his staff report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sloan, and welcome, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you, mayor and council. Uh, so the first up here, I've got, uh, three items here on the agenda for you tonight. Uh, all three are are design work for wash improvements here in the city. The first one is a Havasu Pie Wash Six. Uh, the design improvements agreement is before us. In September 2015, uh, there was an analysis and risk ranking for all of the washes or and all of the washes actually in the city. There was top, the top 10 were chosen and then ranked. Uh, this, uh, uh, wash was ranked as, uh, the sixth highest as far as risk for construction. And what if the uh, the wash alignment is basically downstream of sand wood and downstream end is where it confluences with Avalon Drain. The uh, crossing uh, bars that you see along the wash are, the blue ones are grade control, and the green ones are for drop structures to gain the elevation drop. And then those orange lines are areas where it was recommended for, uh, the bank stabilization on each side. Get this right, yeah. Uh, I've kind of explained more of it, but, uh, the purpose of the project, construct a more stable channel profile with drop and energy dissipation structures. That reduces the scour and erosion at the bottom of the wash and, uh, in the first half and some bank protection for the downstream half. Uh, the also, uh, it would provide grade control and maintenance accessibility where we can get our maintenance trucks up the wash and through the wash for any other maintenance. The other advantage is that it's going to reduce the risk for adjacent property damage. This view here gives you an idea of what's going on in this particular straight run of wash. In the beginning, up there at the top left, it shows the, where the wash has significant scour in the bottom coming off of the dip section. And then getting in the channel is actually causing more of a slot cut. Uh, it it not necessarily is any, uh, uh, trouble with the reservoirs, but you can see our reservoirs are right there, too. Uh, it's the scour is primarily in that location due to high velocities. And then at the downstream end, where it confluences here to the right with, uh, Avalon Drain, you'll see all the sediment that's pushing down and actually causing other issues down in the Avalon Confluence. Um, so, uh, this this project would help alleviate those conditions. Here's a couple other site photos, close-ups, where we're getting scour at the top. You can see that's a hard pan at the bottom where all the sediment has actually washed downstream. And then the bottom end at the bottom photo is where the actual sediment has pushed all the way downstream is now. Actually, they're all making their way to the lake. That that's the bottom line for all washes in the city, but we want to control that as much as possible. There are some permits required and studies. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has their Section 404. There's some bio review and cultural resources compliance, and then the state has their hands in this, too, with a 401 certification for work in the wash. The timeline, uh, for the project, uh, should you award tonight, would be to, uh, award as fast as we can, uh, that we can process the documentation and get it going in August of '22. Uh, we believe we can get through the process 100% bid documents, um, spring of next year, and hopefully construction in one year from, uh, today. That'd be great. Uh, that's, uh, concludes the presentation, and I'll open it up to any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions, uh, of Mr. Wolf from any members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion, uh, possible motion. I'll just make a comment on this and the next two items is, I've said this before multiple times, but for those of us that have lived here a long time, we used to really have to think our way home during a rain event. We would love to have a rain event. Uh, but, uh, when they do come, we have to really think our way home, but because of of using these, uh, uh, these funds and and doing this stuff with our flood control dollars, we've really been able to limit it to just a few areas that are very hard to get through during a a water or storm event of some sort. So, you know, these projects, uh, do do great work to ensure that our citizens can get home and traverse our, cross our roads during those, uh, events in a safe manner, so. And that'll be true for the next, uh, three items, or the next two items as well. Any additional comments or questions before we entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Dolan.
Motion?
Please.
I move toward the agreement for professional services for the Havasu Pie Number Six Wash Stabilization Improvement Project to Kimley Horn and Associates, Incorporated, in the amount of $161,876.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember, uh, Vice Mayor Dolan, and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, the next agenda item is actually, uh, really closely related with the mayor just, uh, mentioned was, uh, wash crossing, wash crossing safety. Uh, this was identified with, uh, as a CIP project, uh, where Eldorado Road or Avenue crosses, um, uh, the Iroquois Wash. Eldorado is, um, uh, very, uh, I'm gonna say has a lot of flow in Eldorado Wash, and that crossing is completely closed with, uh, very minor amounts of water just because of the dip. Um, we're proposing, uh, a design to improve that crossing so that emergency services and residents can get in and out of a a large area, uh, north and, um, um, east of the area. A little bit more of the background, the project was identified to improve the safety during storm events by elimination of the Atgrade Crossing, uh, of Eldorado. Uh, we're proposing a box culvert design at this early stage. It's conceptual, but it's very similar. In fact, the picture that I showed you was the actual Bahama Avenue Crossing just downstream of it, so it's very much the same. Uh, upon further review of the wash crossing, another benefit to the improvement, uh, was of the site distance for this, um, crossing. And, um, if you, there to the right, you'll see the photo where the box culvert is what we're proposing. Uh, but the bottom picture there is actually when you're sitting at Dolphin Drive and you're looking towards the right to either pull out and and go to your left. Uh, there's actually, you're looking upstream, up the roadway of Eldorado, there's actually a car in that dip. And right now, uh, you can't see it, and that's what the driver would see is nothing when they look upstream to pull out, to pull out of Dolphin Drive. So the added benefit of the crossing is going to add some safety for, um, the residents and emergency services, but it's also going to improve the site distance and uh, anyone in that wash it or anyone down the dip section, and someone pulls out, everyone's on their brakes right away. So we're getting a kind of a twofer on that one. Uh, the Car Corps of Engineers is going to have a permit. Uh, there's a little bit of transportation involvement, and that's why it's a nationwide permit for this one. Uh, there is a biological review and the cultural resources compliance that we have to do. The state with ADQ has a 401 water quality certification also required. Similar timeline, uh, we're looking to get this out and going to design as soon as possible, and hopefully we'll be back to you, uh, this time next year for, um, construction award. Um, and I'm open to any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Wolf from any members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion. Motion? Councilmember Lane?
I move toward the agreement for professional services for the Wash Crossing Improvements Project Phase One to Holistic Engineering and Land Management in the amount of $162,663. I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Councilmember Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, then our final item is item eight point one three, award agreement for professional services, uh, design for the Daytona Wash Reach Four Stabilization Project to Holistic Engineering and Land Management. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you, uh, mayor and council. Uh, what happened here? Uh, this, this is, um, the design and improvements for the Daytona Wash for another project that was identified in the 2015 study and report. Um, I'm sorry, does everyone have this? Yeah. The, uh, this wash is a, is quite a bit longer than the previous washes, as well as it it's kind of starting to snake and has some unusual, uh, has some different characteristics to it. The biggest one is the confluence with Green Drive coming in and causing, uh, the, uh, flow downstream to Meander. It's also, if you follow that little yellow line downstream, you'll see it's starting to eat away at that other bank on the side. We like to have a little more control of these washes than that. However, the 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 project was identified as a priority number seven of the top 10. Uh, the project between Sneed and downstream to Oak, uh, is, um, the the purpose would be to construct a more channel, a more stable channel profile. Let's get some control on that thing and reduce the scour and erosion, control some of that lateral bank and erosion, and then reduce the risk for adjacent property damage, as well as provide the design for those drop structures to facilitate maintenance trucks to be able to get in them. Here's a kind of an overview of the condition assessment. Um, you'll see, um, I'm gonna zero in a little more, but, uh, it has, uh, different aspects from the beginning. Where you can see it's deepening the scour at the beginning of the wash to your left. You'll see that there's a quite a big step-down confluence. That water coming from Green is uh, at a high velocity coming into the confluence and kind of causing downstream meander of the, uh, of the wash. Here's some project site photos. You can see the top is that Green Drive. That, uh, pretty good stair step there for a large volume of water that comes down that wash and then has to turn. You'll see a little bit of scour at the bottom of that one, too. Um, the second one, uh, kind of depicts at the beginning where we've got some slot cutting, where that that wash is actually starting to cut, and we want to get some grade and some side bank control on that. Similar permits as what we had in all of these washes, both the Army Corps and the 401 certification with the state. Um, and then the timeline, very similar, although it's a, uh, very similar construction period, and we've asked in this case that the consultant try, because it's a little bigger project, um, that the consultant try and meet this schedule, uh, so that we can get, uh, construction documents back to you for award in a week, in a, in a, in a year, I'm sorry. And I'm open for any questions on this. Like I said, this one is a little bit bigger wash, a lot more design.
Are there any questions, uh, from any members of the council from Mr. Wolf? Councilmember Moses?
Thank you. Uh, man, uh, very informative. Thank you very much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Uh, you mentioned that these are ranked, that these are all ranked in our top 10 or so.
Right.
It would, uh, are we not addressing anything that's a higher rank?
We have.
So we've addressed everything
I
before. I I just want to make sure we're, we're not addressing something that should be, that's more important, but we're not doing it because we don't have the funds for it. You see where I'm going with this?
I do. Um, and I, uh, I I cannot answer, uh, which ones above this one we have done, but I know one we recently finished, two of them was Havasu Pie Three, which is higher ranked, and the Avalon Drain, which just finished up this year, which was also higher ranked, and I'm, I'm kind of hoping Dan helps me out on this.
I've been here just a little bit longer than Mike, so we're both in the same boat. But no, uh, when we took that over, when I got here a year and a half ago, we'd seen that the first five had already been done, and so then we completed the Havasu Pie and the Avalon, and now we're moving into the next one. So based on those rankings, when, uh, and it goes all the way up to 15, and so we're, we're moving our way through that now.
Good. It it just might be nice to see, you know, where where they're at on that. Just, just make sure we're not skipping any super important ones just because we don't have it in the budget.
Absolutely.
My whole thing is we need to take care of our infrastructure regardless of, uh, you know what I mean, and we need to make sure we're, we're safe. So that was my only concern, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Campbell, did you have a question or comment?
I was just gonna comment that I know that some of these design costs, we don't, we're not even thinking about them. We're just pushing the button now. But when you go through some of these here, you'll start to realize that comparing them to the other designs, um, just some of this construction ratings and this, there's a lot of work when we start touching, um, these washes and anything to do with washes. There's so many government layers and so much oversight that, um, it's a little different than a contractor coming in and just doing a rebuild on site of a building. So I just want to say I know a little bit more about these, and that's why it's really easier for me to push a button and let it go because I just know how much work and oversight to get these plans done. A lot of people don't even want to touch these projects, but we do have some good contractors that do them, so we're lucky.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
Sorry, I just was curious. The whole, um, city's engineering department and then, um, the design and you send, I I don't understand why you guys have two different things. Does the city engineering department handle the design and construction document preparation also?
I know our city engineering department is the, uh, project managers on behalf of the city for these projects to manage the professional consultants that do this kind of work every day.
So they aren't responsible for doing any of that part?
They're responsible to manage the project of the, uh, should the council elect to award, uh, this bid this evening, they would manage that contract. they would manage that contract.
Okay.
You're welcome. Any other comments? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Campbell, please.
I move to award the agreement for professional services for the Daytona Wash Reach Four Stabilization Project to Holistic Engineering and Land Management in the amount of $245,163.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell, a second from Vice Mayor Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you.
Uh, item nine on the agenda is current events. Are there any council committee reports? All right, we'll move on to item 10, our, uh, future meetings.